Change order is just five o'clock. We have four, four members present in person and we have Director Deidre Hennings via Zoom. Do I have a motion to establish a schedule?
I don't need to establish a schedule, I just published.
All in favor of establishing, I can't see, okay. I have to turn my head around to see them. All in favor of establishing the agenda as published. Say aye.
Aye.
Auto say me, that passes by a vote of zero. Welcome to our mini visitor's day. This is the annual, this is the medium which we do our annual reorganization on the board. And so that is our first order of business. We don't have any new representatives, so I'm now calling for nominations for president to serve during the year that begins now and ends next early December.
I nominate Director D'Souza for president.
Do you have any second, a second to that? Thank you. You want to also say anything?
No.
Does anyone want to say anything? Any questions?
I have something to question. I, so coming up on an election year where we have three of the five positions open. We have had discussions before on potential campaigning while being president or vice president. And I know people have different views on that. I, you know, made the decision to resign as president when I learned I had a contested election. By no means is it policy, but having gone through that experience, I think that is, I think it's vital for the community. I don't think it's anyone on the board that has trouble establishing between, or some of, you know, the board's position as whole or some individual's opinion of something. But I think it is confusing for the community in speaking on behalf of the board, which is, which is a huge goal of the president. So I have, I, Director D'Souza's term is up this year. I have no idea if there's an intention to run again. I would just like to know what your feeling is on whether or not if you do should run and if you are in a contested election, how do you feel about that?
Sure. It's an interesting idea. We, I think you ran it that way a couple of times. Unfortunately, I don't believe it served the board well. And so I declined to sub written policy. So I declined to follow unwritten policy.
I, I mean, there's not a motion and it's not on the agenda. It's a change policy. And I, I think that, I know, I understand that. I did, I think, I think the public can distinguish between the roles on the board and, and, and candid season. I think actually the, of the merits, understanding that there's positives and negatives to both. I think having board president, vice presidents, legislative rep goals remain the same. I think there's, there's more benefit than drawback, in my view. Irrespetably, i- if someone is running or not, like I, I think the continuity is, is the largest benefit for it.
Okay. Um, yeah, I just wanted to add that if that is something that people are interested in picking up as possible, like change the policy in the future, like we want as a board to set out as a policy, that's what we think. Um, okay. So all in favor, Ken does not have her hand up. I don't want her to respond.
I, I think it's an interesting conversation, but since we haven't made it into policy and I, I don't think it's relevant to our election to today. And I don't think we should ask each other kind of, you know, how we feel about it. Because that's something for, until it's policy, it's really for the individual to decide. And I think they have that right to decide when they do choose to run for election later on. But until then, I think we should just kind of stick to the intent of today's election.
Okay. Thank you. This is a roll call, but we will just start it and work our way this way. I'm all in favor of, yeah, individual. No, I have to say what the thing is. If you are in favor, in favor of Director D'Souza becoming our next board president, starting with, yeah. Ken?
Aye.
Aye. That passes by a vote of four to one. Uh, thank you very much. And congratulations. So I'm just gonna move down here.
So, thank you. Proceeding, proceeding on the, we are first. The next is a call for nominations for vice president to serve during the ensuing year. Those nominations and made, made by a second will be considered for election. So with that, do I have any nominations for vice president?
I would like to nominate Dan.
My second? And with that, any other nominations? Okay, and with that, any discussion?
I do have something to say. I think it has been really nice to have Dan on the board. I feel like the board has a really wide diversity of perspectives and strength. And especially with additional strength that Dan has brought on and his recent leadership in bringing a lot of more regional work and thinking about broader impact, policy impact that, you know, the legislature might make that has on Mercer Island. So I really appreciate all the extra work and I really look forward to his being vice president on our board.
Thank you very much. And with that, let's do a vote call. For those in favor of Director Loitz being vice president, we'll do a vote call first. Dan?
Aye.
Ever?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
And if that is an aye, and I'm an aye, that's a five, zero, or director votes to be vice president. Okay, thank you very much. And I'd just like to echo it. Thank you very much to Maggie Tai. This was a very long role as, as president and one of the hardest. So during her term, we did the search for a new superintendent. And it is an incredibly taxing, tiring and long hours behind the scenes. Probably 10x more than any other board member has to do to make the whole process work. We do not have an HR team for the board. The HR team, the secretary, the president, that go between for every single interview, every single candidate, every single decision, every single post on our website is, thank you very much to Maggie Tai. So much appreciation on the off of the board.
Thank you very much. And I would like to say, I realize most people probably aren't aware, but we've been pretty out of sync in our, in our board officer kind of changeovers the last couple of years because of COVID, because of election factors, because of the election. And so it's really nice to be getting back on the December, December calendar. Thank you.
And so now let's do a call for nomination of legislative representative to serve during the ensuing year. Those nominations made by a seconded motion will be considered for election.
I nominate Robert R. D.
Second. Okay, any, any other nominations? And with that, we have Deborah's legislative representative.
Oh, we didn't say, say something like, I, I think Deborah, like you did a great job with the, using the electric buses and working with Representative Tan Sen. I know you have a lot of relationships in the region. And I think, you know, as we've seen with the regionalization and some of the issues that first step is identifying it, but then the next step, which is still to be done, is building sort of a regional coalition, that is to speak in a unified voice. And I think you're very well positioned to, to do that. And yeah, I'm excited.
Any other discussion? And with that, the votes on the table is a, is, is to accept Deborah Director Laurie as our legislative representative and a roll calls in favor, starting with Maggie.
Aye.
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 And I'm an aye. Cheers.
So only, I know there's some meetings coming up and advocacy thing that I don't really think I have on my radar.
I'll do that during, we can do that either during my report or maybe at the updates at the end. Let's do that at legislative and board reports.
Thank you. With that, we are public input. A public input today, yeah. We'll just make the general call for public input. If anybody would like to address the board, you can do so over Zoom at the podium or via email and have it included as part of the minutes if so required or requested. So we appreciate hearing from our community members. There's a lot going on right now, so your feedback is welcome and appreciated. With that, superintendent for, thank.
Great. Well, thank you very much. I want to echo your sentiments, President D'Souza, and just appreciation for Director Tucker. And, you know, as I started my superintendency, you were in that leadership position and all the way through the candidacy process. You know, I felt that you represented the board and then, you know, I was certainly a candidate, but you know, it's hard to be an internal candidate. And I really appreciate just how you, you know, helped me along in terms of our, the search consultant that you had found and whatnot. But I think you served the board really well. And so, and you and welcome Director Loitz to your new seats. Look forward to working with you in a different, different way. Representative Laurie, you've been rep before and we've got, you have, well, welcome. You and I are going to be shoulder to shoulder through this ledge session. So you joined that. I think it's kind of like teaching civics during a presidential election. You're going to be in that seat during the, a really interesting ledge session. And then I've been in different seats in this room when you've been president. So it'd be fun to be side by side. With that, just a couple of announcements as we're kind of looking here, obviously you saw my comments to the community around December celebrations and had some positive feedback. But my follow-up on the snow day and how, how that goes about received a lot of appreciations, even people who said, I may not always agree, but at least now I understand. So, you know, hopefully we won't have to use anymore. Having one used up as early as it has is not a good omen, but we will have our makeup day in March. That will be the new makeup day. As far as regionalization, we had a chance today. Director Sullivan and Director Booby and myself, we were on with the Alliance today. And I think we're starting to get some critical mass as far as people realizing Tohoma certainly is, is on board with this as an Alliance member, Lake Stevens, Everett, even Lake Washington today seem to, you know, you know, see where this is all headed. I was also on the call with the Puget Sound Educational Service District Superintendent yesterday morning. And it is still on the top five priority list for the Puget Sound Educational Service District. The big discussion is how do we make sure that our colleagues such as Federal Way, Vashon, Bethel actually get lifted up to be more regionally competitive with us? So that they're not at a disadvantage while we stay at the 18%. But other than that, I think we're moving in a really good direction. And so next week, when we have a chance to sit down with Senator Roman and Representative Sen to continue the conversation, I think it can head in a good direction. Lake Washington had met with them already last week. And then Tohoma, Izakua, they're meeting with Representative Callan and Senator Mullet. And they're having the exact same conversation. So I think we're at least on this side of the, of, of the lake and, and in this region. And we're moving in a good direction. So, you know, thanks for really getting that going with your colleagues and the boards and whatnot. And I think we'll just continue. I don't think we should let off the gas, but let's get through the state of course. And then just remembering to let Michelle know if you're intending to attend the Wasda, Wassa, Wasvo Conference February 26th and 27th. The 26th is the ledge day. The 27th is the day on the hill where I know the, the two of you are looking forward to that. And it's really, I mean, what better way to broadcast voice than the two of you being with all the legislators and right in the middle of the session? So the 26th is a little tricky because that's the last Sunday of our midweeker break. So that's a bit of a, of a little bit of a conundrum as we go there. So other than that, looking forward to staying the course the next week and a half, finishing strong. As we often say, trying to run through the finish line, not to the finish line. So looking forward to a, a strong finish from everyone heading into a much deserved week. So with that, that's my report.
Thank you very much. I guess we will move on to board policy 1250, students and governing boards, student back report, the best part of the board reading.
Oh, thank you. First, congratulations to you guys. I'll be able to work with you guys, some of you more now with your new positions. With that, we have a pretty happy report. A lot is being done right before the, the holiday break. So starting out at elementary students, it feels like they've been working the hardest. They shared at Lake Ridge, they went to Islandwood and they said they had a laugh. All of the schools are working on their school plays and they're saying that's always an amazing time of the year. Island Park said that Green Team started up and they've been building community through that club, which was great to hear. A lot of schools like West Mercer are hosting culture fairs and other community bonding events. A lot of students have been going to that and saying it's been fun. Another big piece that we took away from that meeting was that students felt like they were really proud of belonging to their elementary schools, which was always something that we loved to hear. And Island Park also said that they were happy that they got new slaves. So that was a big positive.
Yeah, so moving on to the middle school, they had a band concert this Tuesday. And that included beginning instruments, which is grade five and then sixth through eighth grade. We heard from our student advisory that they feel that their leadership class is doing a really good job of settling in, organizing spirit. And that brings a lot of community with that. We also heard that the traffic and the competition went really well over at the middle school. There was a couple of concerns over hallway traffic despite that they switched to one-way hallways. Hopefully that was smoothed over. And to look forward to the high school chapter of the Science National Honor Society is hosting a middle school science fair. So that will be exciting. And wrestling also started at the moment.
At the high school, we moved into our fall sports, which includes boys' fight, wrestling, gymnastics, alternate frisbee and basketball for both boys and girls. It's a fun time. The football's over. We have basketball as one of the larger turnouts. But we're always working on how can we bring more turnout to maybe some of the more smaller, more smaller sport that maybe don't have as, as horribly big turnouts. Our winter sports, Spirit Assembly is tomorrow, which will be a fun one. It's always fun to get everyone in right before break and decided to do this Friday versus next week. Because we feel like people might be gone next Friday. So we decided tomorrow would be a better time for going with that. And then also at the end of October, we talked about our board meeting with our unified football game. So we work with our unified sports teams and we've had a football game and we'll have another one later this, later in January for basketball. Drill team had a competition at the Lake Washington Day competition. They placed first in military category and third in prom category, which is super awesome. So they'll be showcasing the next hour of the assembly. And the next competition is January 14th after the night.
Yeah, so at the last board meeting, it was the first day of Greece. And it ended up being a big hit. They sold out on several nights. And the emergency trauma department is now working on a play called End of Challenge, I'll lead. It's a true story of, it's a coming of age and taking a theme. It's the Jewish city established in the, by the Nazi camp abroad as a way in a station before that. So they're working with, I know they've had people, guest speakers come and talk and so they're being really good about the future of the pandemic. And the radio department continues to win awards. They won 42 intercollegiate broadcasting system awards. It was really cool. And the school people will be releasing their winter issue next week, bulk of the year. Students are really looking forward to relaxing with the break before finals in the new year. There is a little bit of stress right now and it's great for us to be maybe finalized, but the break will be good for students.
Yeah, I'm on real quickly, the, our new MITV also on six awards at those, which is really cool. They have smaller categories and you have our amazing advisor behind us who is doing that that often, that they're also able to participate in the broadcasting awards as well. Before I continue on, just going back about the drama and, and all of our other events. What's really great in also leadership is we're really trying to connect our high school students with our middle school students. So our middle school students came up for Greece for the final death rehearsal and they're able to do that together. And we're working with the high school and middle school leadership on the middle schoolers coming up to the high school. And when the middle schoolers have their year homecoming, students help with that. So in our message of kind of community right before the holidays, we're trying to make it, we're trying to continue to build the community and also to, when we can, try to mix as much as better. Just so we all feel that we're a part of the Marshall School District. And the last thing we really want to do is shout out our amazing marketing programs. They've been out working with the youth foundation, selling trees out in the community. That's ID class that's planned by this half this year and that's been awesome. And then there was also the Stanley and Dunn ceremony, which was November 28th. So I was able to attend that. You know, it was awesome to see the portrait. MITV also did a recording of that, if you missed it, you can watch it on their website. So we also have speakers from our DSU come and talk about it. So that was our report for the schools. We're going to briefly talk about our advisory meeting and then a walk through.
Yeah, so we had our advisory meeting yesterday. And at our advisory meeting, we wanted to focus on a certain theme that we could create tasks or like accomplishments to see change based on that theme. So we focused on broadcasting student voice. We first defined the student voice, what that's a group, and explored what it looks like in each of our schools in the district. We hope at our next meeting, we'll, we'll define specific actions that can be done at each school so that we can see some change from this advisory group.
We know that some of our directors are interested in attending one of those meetings. So we'll see maybe even at our next one or one of them, to have a couple of directors sit in and see how we work. Finally, just a walk through recap, Asha, Asha partly, and I fully attended the event. Asha got sick, so she had to go home early, but we still were able to learn a lot. It was nice, again, connecting with school board reps around the state, talking about reusulation was part of the conversation that we had with school board reps. Also been talking about how to improve, how to improve our role across the state and how to have a more prominent voice, especially in districts where we don't do it as well as we do. So it was a really fun event. Next year it will be in W, which will be nice for the next senior junior rep to go to. It will be a lot less of a headache to get there and back. So yeah, that's all in our report. If you have questions, let us know. But we're excited to be back in the new year with new ideas.
Thank you very much. Any discussion, any questions or questions?
I, I'm sure Dr. Rendell has something to say too, but what was great is Andrew participated on a panel in front of what 1100 conference participants along with three or other students and, and it, Andrew got brands of applause, spontaneous brand of applause. And to the point where we were walking around with him at the, for the rest of the conference, we were basically just with Andrew. Fire us at progress. So it was great that you guys reached out and wanted to participate and really seeing the importance of building relationships and advocating and, and.
Thank you. I would just add, you know, the, the two of them have really, we've been looking this year as co-leads of the superintendent student advisory. And so as we've met, they've helped the crafty agenda to brainstorm the ideas, submit them to, to, to Michelle, get them and then help me co-lead the meetings. And I really appreciated that. It's been great to lead alongside you. And I thought the change you made yesterday of just having the students be able to come in instead of just reporting around and write down their thoughts. I thought that was really effective and I think it shows tonight too in terms of depth and context and, and contour. So I, you know, the way you're lifting up the broadcasting student voice, you're continuing to build on the, the past representatives. So we've got some great things going and I know our next meeting is coming up quickly. So we'll be able to get some, some more action points going. But thank you both.
Thank you.
And one last thing, just as I, I would bring it up at board reports, but you guys are always here at the end. It's, instead of us going to, you know, maybe taking turns going to this superintendent student advisory, because that does impact the, I imagine it would impact the dynamics. Someone had an idea to have me have a student advisory linkage that we created as a linkage session. So I will bring that up, but I didn't know if you guys wanted to comment on that now, just in case you're not here. I thought about that.
Yeah, it just happened to be earlier today, 3:15 or 4:15 is our normal time. So, but that'd be awesome to do the linkage.
Any other discussion, questions? I, I appreciate the idea of there, at least the clubs, you talked about the science clubs meeting across the two schools. Is that a goal to expand it, clubs or anything that's kind of convenient that shows up?
I think it's a lot program based, like personally, like journalism, he's out to create a writing class or like a lot of programs, the initiative, but we can find a way to kind of get clubs, most clubs to do it. Like a lot of the science that are subject based, they can definitely go and do that.
I see. That's a great idea.
One of the things I was at, Island Park today with our principal Wollworth and then Principal Newcomer joined us for the conversation, but we had a very similar conversation. Our Black Student Union um, has started a mentoring program at West Mercer. Um, one of our Jewish student clubs um, is working with, I have a Lakewood right now on the Daffodil project. And so they were talking about how it is great to have adult facilitators, but when they get to see. You know, people, students who look like them who are high schoolers, that really makes a difference. So they're going to be working with the high school to see if we can continue with some of those partnerships with those clubs. Um, that, that peer and and mentor relationship is really important.
Yeah, I know, I know my kids really appreciate it, looking up to mentors in the high school, so. And all of us can recognize that even ourselves, it was, it was a great opportunity, so thank you for experiencing that.
And just, sorry, I forgot one announcement, this is uh, Mr. Michael Ketchum, he is uh, new to our school district this year. Um, he is setting up our, our new uh, broadcasting team, our other end, instead of just having radio, moving into video. And so, you know, we used to do the uh, board buzz and we're trying to figure out a way to. Highlight and capture different parts of our board meeting to put in the videos, so the students will be doing editing. And then get that out as a way for the community to uh, see highlights. And then they don't have to watch the whole board meeting, but they'll get highlights, so we're trying out a few things, so welcome tonight, thanks for being here.
He's bad sexy. Okay, well, with the, the end of uh, two A, let's move to two B, Board Policy in hundred and seventy, Financial Administration Year End Reports.
Great, um, I'll turn it over to Director Sullivan here in a moment, um, I, I hope that you felt positively leaving Tuesday's. Uh, study session where we covered this in great detail. I know you as a board um, wanted visibility for the community as well and for us just to touch on a few things. Um, so mainly kind of fund balance, um, update on the Moody rating and then, you know, the just overall priorities. So um, high level overview, Director Sullivan.
Yeah, just as uh, Superintendent Rendell mentioned, uh, we walked through for about half an hour, your end financial report. Or summary, if you will, about twenty-one pages, also included with that was the F one nine six, which is the state required financial report two. Um, Tashon High points throughout that with that, as Superintendent Rendell mentioned, uh, fund balance to year-end numbers. And it's just a point to note for the public that it is in front of us and available for dissemination.
Are there specific items you want us to recover or make sure that we capture again or points of discussion, maybe even since Tuesday that you've been thinking about in the report?
Uh, looking to other directions, any thoughts?
I, I think the one thing to highlight for those of the public who probably do not, uh, you know, listening uh, during Tuesday's discussion. There's the anticipation of repaying the interfund loan um, in January or February. Um, and sort of uh. More precision when it comes to how we allocate funds. Uh, amongst the different monies, amongst the different funds. Um, in particular, perhaps, you know, using interest and the capital technology and being able to use that and apply it to the general fund. Um, just sort of the first step in towards sort of, I think, you know, fiscal uh, security is um. A holistic review of how we're allocating funds. And then um, once that is bottomed out, and I think we're making good progress, um, to returning to other matters.
And just work, no, I'm not going to have the numbers off the top of my head, but I think um, no, besides the two million dollar. Um, loan is the fund balance and the concern that we were very, very, very low after using the fund balance that we had, a healthy one. Um, using it as a rainy day fund, um, in order to get us through COVID, which, which. I think everyone still agrees was the, the response, the prudent thing to do. Um, is building it back and, and finances are looking solid, it's going to take, you know. I, I don't want to give an estimate, but more than a year, certainly to get back to our um, according policy of um, eight to ten percent. But, but we're, we should be well, things are looking good, that they're well on our way.
And I think also useful was the comparison of our fund dollars to neighboring fund balances. In the historical context of a lot of those districts, I mean, we've seen vastly more in S R funds from, from the federal government than we got. So their fund ounces are still a bit higher, but those funds run out after this year, so a lot of them are going to be kind of going off. The same book that, that we've gone off of, so we're already, we're kind of recovered from it and they'll, they'll have that ahead of them.
Although building off what um, Director Tucker said, I mean, a lot. Um, what is T E D, depending on what happens at the end of this legislative session. Um, the way uh, the bonus structure is, at least the O S P I's proposal. Um, for high poverty school district is fairly expansive, um, and applied to forty-five percent of certificated staff statewide. Um, it would not impact our school district in terms of funds. But what that means is those districts that received quite a bit of S R funds. Um, this would be sort of part G of that, that would be a continuation. Um, and there isn't much evidence that I've seen uh, that it would result uh, in enhanced programming for those districts. Uh, and benefit ultimately students of those district. But we certainly would be um, sort of accelerating, continuing some of the dynamics that we've already experienced. Um, where uh, you know, we're, we're essentially running with weights. Um, and not have the same benefit as other school districts.
So I think, you know, this was, you know, perhaps the graph that, you know, I know you pointed to Director Sullivan and in terms of. Our historical fund balance and, and how will that, what will the interplay be? Um, as legislative priorities come out, building on that, um, you know, we still are focused really on forming. Um, areas and I talked to all of the leadership team on Tuesday morning. You know, obviously regionalization and maintaining our ground there. Um, special education funding, remembering that, you know, it's. Uh, okay, eleven and a half million dollar over spend total and so four million.
Four point three about?
Four point three million that we're paying for locally, because the state still doesn't fully fund. Um, the prototypical school model, um, you know, the fact that a third of our staff um. Are not paid for by the state and are paid for by the local uh, levies and then finally just the levy and. Um, being our E P and O levy and kind of having that artificial ceiling on us, so. I agree, there's going to be a lot of moving parts here, uh, interacting, but. If you wanted to stop about this overall feelings after being at the district for. At least two and a half months.
Uh, there's a lot to tackle and a lot to learn, and I'm still on that curve. And then we spoke with Superintendent Rendell on a regular basis, patience, being positive, we will get there, it will take some time, especially my kind of fund balance, so we'll.
So I, I will say thank you to the new finance team, uh, I appreciate these reports, I think as a board, we all appreciate the reports. There, there's new level of transparency in these reports. For example, all our fund balances, our capital projects, our A S B are now surfaced in these reports, which is new. Uh, we are able to uh, track and understand our loan as well as. Having accountability around repaying these amounts and restoring. Uh, our fund balance and balancing our revenue and expenditures over the long term. So our goal is to. Continue being a high confidence, high performing, high performing school district, I don't think we ever lost that. But underneath, if you uncover, under, lift up the covers a little bit. You know, we, we need to make sure our finances represent our reputation and our involvement represents our reputation. And then the uh, communication team app. And so I know uh, Brent is working on all three, so thank you very much and the, the team has been. The finance team has been a great part of that, so we, we appreciate that.
The other thing I wanted to, to point out to, to the public is um. One of the, the slides in the presentation, slide eleven shows that there has been. Theorically a fairly large divergence between budget and actual, both with respect to revenue as well as expenditures. Um, and I think Director Sullivan um, is very focused on, on narrowing that, so it's. What, what actual and what projected and budgeted are, um, are very close to one another. Um, so that there isn't uncertainty of, of where we stand. Um, and I look forward to that and I think it will build trust and confidence for everybody.
Is there um. Any district um. That actually only staffs at a prototypical school one?
No.
And that would be my guess, and I just, I, it, once again, it's reframing the argument. I mean, I don't know how they can call prototypical school model and then, you know, I mean. Our staff appears that it's, you know, that legislature says five point one percent raise, but it's totally misleading. And um, I wonder if we need to, want to, you know, get together and really kind of. Make up a new name and, and challenge them a bit. We almost had a part, uh, parallel to you.
So are we done with item B and so let's move to item C, the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three financial dashboard?
Uh, so provided to you is obviously the dashboard along with the monthly status report. Uh, this is through the month of October, as you all know, I've received treasury statements. For the month prior, uh, usually around the ninth, tenth, eleventh, and we haven't really been like this one month. We're not able to obviously reconcile the treasury statements for November, so we are through October. For sixteen point six percent of this year for the dashboard. Um, I like to look over on the right, far right-hand side for each expenditure and revenue to see. Where the total year percent of budget to actual is, in this case, the expenditure is fifteen point nine percent. So we're slightly under budget, which is a good thing. And then revenues were eighteen point three percent on our side of total September through October. Which is a good thing because obviously in October, April, we'll receive a large portion of our local taxes. Through King County, so that number should be higher than lower this time of year. Um, at the bottom left corner, um, I've added per your direction, hopefully they've captured it, if I haven't let you know. I've added what I call two widgets, but there are two tables, specifically the capital fund and loan repayment table right there at the bottom of the screen. And then also we'll be tracking the current fund balance for this year twenty-two, twenty-three. I believe that's what you asked of me, if, if not, let me know and or if there's anything else you wanted to add, I can do that also. But these are kind of living widgets and we'll track this throughout the years and move forward.
Thanks, any questions from directors?
The next report that you'll receive in the second meeting in January will actually then finally kind of catch us up. So you'll get the November and December uh, report in January and then we'll be more on a, at the second, sorry, at the second meeting in January, right? Yeah, and so we'll kind of get back, we'll get a little bit off track again in February, because you only have one meeting, but then March we'll catch back up, so.
So this was uh, primarily for uh, transparency to our community. Uh, the, the, all board members were present at a meeting on Tuesday where we went over these budgets. Uh, with the team for about two hours, uh, so thank you very much for that detailed uh, set of reports. And it allows us to have our more streamlined board meeting today. Okay, um, with that. Is that everything, can we move on to the next one? Uh, item two D, Board Policy fifty-ten, non-discrimination and affirmative action.
Great, so we are coming to the end of um, uh. One of our plan or our, uh, the current plan, and so we're wrapping up the current plan and then we're now forecasting for the future plan. Um, and so I'll turn this over to uh, Director Aaron Batter speed, uh, to walk us through uh, the contours of. The new plan as we're moving forward, an analysis of kind of where we've been. Uh, where we've made some inroads and where we continue to fall short of where we're trying to get to, so.
Yeah, so as um. Superintendent Rendell shared, uh, we were, we had a plan that was originally, and it also should be attached to your jet, it's small up there. Uh, that was the original plan that we, was approved by the board back in twenty seventeen. And if you were to, were to look at that plan, you'd show that we were overall looking to increase our. Um, workforce diversification in certain areas, just looking at our. Employment as compared to availability in the employment pool. At that time, we had available to us pretty granular data from O S P I, so I'm looking, it's not shared there. But I'm looking back at the initial report. Page four. We, we're looking at two things, this requirement have an affirmative action plan, so this report and plan meets that requirement. And O S P I at the time was providing information specific to certificate administrators, classified administrators and breaking down. Um, the data for females and minority youth, um, between both secondary and elementary as well as. Uh, specialists and educational support and clerical support, so they were providing all K twelve specific data. At that time, using that data, if you look on page four of the report, you see we were under utilizing female in colonial grounds. Bus driver and maintenance. And then in terms of minorities, um, we were under utilizing, which means we were, we had. A lower percentage of minorities in our workforce, um, than within the available population. For several areas, elementary teachers, and that's inclusive of those with special services or special education endorsements. Um, certificate specialist, classified educational support, so that's typically our paracros. Our clerical support, um, our bus drivers and our maintenance, so we have several areas. In which we were underutilized, which again, we, that we had a lower representation than you would expect given the available workforce. Um, and so our goals were obviously tailored to increasing the utilization in those areas. So if you go to the twenty twenty-three plan, it does sort of two things, because this plan is expiring. Um, it is sort of a reaffirmation of our goal and process to continue to work on these things. And it also is an analysis of how we have done to date. This proved to be somewhat challenging um, to do because our, the available data changed, which created a lot of noise, for lack of a better term. Or um, sort of false understanding or inability to determine how we had. Grown or not grown, because O S P I no longer provides the granular data that's K twelve specific. Um, they really only provide classroom teacher um, availability, which is basically anybody who is not an administrator. They don't break it down by elementary or certificate and they don't provide the information for pair educators. Um, or for things on clerical support specialists, we didn't have case of twelve specific data. So you had to rely very heavily on the data from, I'm now on page three and it's all linked here. So we had to rely on the census data, which is from twenty fourteen to twenty eighteen, I will highlight. That if you look, we use the twenty fourteen, twenty eighteen E of census data for King County, because we're trying to look at our population as opposed to the whole state. Which might skew in terms of the availability and we're using the twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one Washington O S P I. Um, classroom teacher demographic information, that's the most current information that is available. I just want to highlight that, because it does look old, because you've been in twenty eighteen, a few years ago now, so that is the most recent data that's available. But even when having to shift to the E D O census data, um, that was also challenging. Because they made pretty significant changes in how they sort of identified drop groupings. Which affected the way we looked in terms of the availability year on year from, you know, twenty eighteen to now. And it's because how they grouped it, so the availability changed radically, which skewed um, sort of our presentation to data. So table one just gives the O S P I um, demographics of the federal race constituency for Washington teachers in the classroom. And if you see, and I know that you've heard this sort of um, year over year, it's on page four, um, but the number of certificate. It staff available who are minorities, um, is quite small. So the green are those who identify as white, which is eighty-six point eight percent of those certificate teachers in the state identify as white. Um, and the remainder identified various federally recognized um. Race and ethnicities, and then there's, I think, point nine, if I remember correctly, point nine percent, they declined to provide their information. information. So we're starting with a very um white pool, but we're trying to align it, and I'm going to actually have you jump down, I'm sorry, um, Andrea. Our goal is ultimately try have a teacher demographic, and jump down to page twelve, that is closer to um our what our student body is. Because again, I think it was referencing earlier in this, meaning it's nice to see your leader and see yourself and those who aren't teaching you or supporting you in a full setting. Maybe you look at this graph, it doesn't look the same. So the makeup of our student body population is aligned to those that are available, those certificate staff in the state, and that's the job that our district and all districts have. Um, so we're trying to create a a teacher pie, for lack of a better term, and an educational mix that matches or at least reflects our student body mix, and that that's just not the available pool. And so that is a struggle. Scrolling back up to, sorry, page four, I think it's maybe it's five, uh, table two, so that's on page five. Um, that's then looking at the available male, female um teachers. And again, this was brought up, it was directed to our consent always found um recall sort of in elementary classrooms, there are not a lot of male teachers. And when half of your student body is male, we're also wanting to look at that. But really, the report and what we're expected to do isn't so much looking at the male population, but did want to highlight that it tends to be a more female um heavy industry with seventy four point three percent of the certificate classroom teachers being female versus twenty five point seven percent identifying as male. There was no um reflection of other genders, so I do want to highlight that. So that's why they don't appear here. Any questions so far? Okay. So if you scroll down to the table three, which is on the next page, and this is just me walking through how we've done over time. Um, you'll see that the availability, and you'll see what I was talking about with the change in source data. If you look at twenty seventeen for certificate administrators, we were looking at O S P I. And in twenty twenty two, our only option is this census E E O King County data. Um, and there's a huge jump in female availability, and there is a less significant increase, but still significant increase in minority availability. Part of that is not only because the removal of or the unavailability of O S P I specific data, but also because of the change in how they classify certificate administrators, the census E E O King County data. Uh, the certificate administrators and classified administrators, the closest analog we could find was uh daycare, I think it was. Uh, for the job group was daycare and education administrators. So it does mean reference certificate or not. And for childcare centers, you see a higher population that's female. So it's a different type of administrator, but they sort of lump lump them all together. So it skews our availability data. Um, and if you look, there's explanations to wherever there was significant um changes. And if you look at elementary teacher and secondary teachers, again, we had a a lump of data instead of it being disaggregated out. So that's part of the change. And what we had seen when there was O S P I provided data, at least with the male and female availability, was that there are more males available at the secondary than at the um and less females than at the primary grade or elementary grades. And then the other, I think, significant thing to highlight were changes in um clerical support and custodial grounds. So with respect to clerical support, you'll see a, again, a pretty significant jump is going from seventy two percent um female availability to ninety one point eight percent. And again, that's due to changes in what they consider the job categories. Back in twenty seventeen, the category in in included secretaries as well as stock clerks, insurance claims and quality processing clerks, mail clerks, mail machine operators, office clerks, and statistical assistant personnel. And then it moved to just including secretaries and administrative assistants. So the the range of people that were included in the job category changed. And as that changed, as they removed things like stock clerks, mail machine operators, physical specialists, the available employment population became more female. So that just explains that change. It ultimately impacts our numbers. And finally, with respect to the custodial grounds, um, you'll see there's again a pretty large jump from male to female. But again, that's because in you had to go through a crosswalk to figure out that they, in terms of custodial grounds, where it used to be custodians and building maintenance, they added maids and cleaners, which changed the female availability, because there were more females who do maid work and uh work with identified cleaners. That just sort of shows the difference in the the data that we have for comparison. Table four is sort of a graphical representation of that. And normally, we wouldn't want to see such big jumps in the comparison data, but it's really all we have. So moving on to the next page is just sort of our utilization analysis for females. And unfortunately, I think we've we've made progress, but um we continue to be underutilized in females for custodians and grounds, bus drivers and maintenance. And that's not purely because there's more women in the population for custodial and grounds. We we don't have any women um in those positions. So we haven't had a change in our utilization. We haven't had significant turnover, and that's the other thing. We in like bus driver and maintenance, we have the same staff that we had five years ago um in order to create movement. Um, and I'll address that later. We we need we would we would need to lose staff or add F T. So there's really two options there, uh, which we haven't done either thing of those in those categories. If you look to the district um utilization analysis analysis for minorities, there's one category where we have actually become made one uh slid backwards and not grown, and that's in certificate administration. Um, again, because we're a small district, the N is small, but we have lost back in twenty seventeen, we had two minority certificate administrators, and now we have none. So that's um, that is, that's the opposite of progress clearly. So that's highlighted there um with the underline. We continue to recruit and try to attract quality minority candidates, uh, but we have been unsuccessful in uh hiring them. Looking at classified administrators, we we are still utilizing, actually, our numbers increased. Um, with elementary teachers, we have made increases as well. So we actually achieved utilization for ele- elementary teachers with uh in terms of minority utilization, we continue to have utilization with secondary. Um, we are underutilized and can be so with certificate specialists. Though we did make progress in that category. Um, and again, we made progress, we went from being underutilized to utilized, which is great for our pair of educational support, so that there are parapros. And bus drivers, we are, we saw that we haven't made significant progress there. And with maintenance, it shows that we made progress, but I want to highlight that it's not actually because there was a change. It appears like we've made growth, but really we lost one staff member. So it changed the statistic. So that's why it's there, but when you're dealing with an N of under ten, one person makes a pretty radical change in the percentage. So I don't want to identify or claim that as progress on behalf of the district, uh, because really it was the loss or elimination of a position. If you look uh right below, this is the district change minority utilization as a percent of the job category total. So this is just looking at M I numbers. And the reason why this is provided is this is looking at just the percentage of people as compared to people employed in the district. And it does show, again, with the exception of our certificate administrators. Yeah. A a that we have grown in terms of numbers or percent of our um our staff being being minorities in every single category except certificate administrators. So we have made progress if you're just looking at Mercer Island data. This is not something we would typically provide because we're looking at utilization, but given sort of the the noise in the comparative data, I felt it was important to show the green versus blue line shows that we have made strides in terms of our recruitment um and uh retention of minority staff. So with respect to those, this is work that never ends. Um, that's the reality. We'll continue with our efforts despite the realization that the availability may not, uh, minority candidate or women may not align um with the with our students' demographic. So that is our goal. And it's, we truly believe that it is in our students' best interest to see and be served by staff that look like them and look like the world that they're going to be going out into. And also, it's not just the appearance, but also brings cultural um cultural perspectives that's different and varied. So they learn how to interact with people of different cultures more readily. So that means that we're going to continue to do this work, and this assessment or evaluation of our progress helps us identify areas in which we can focus um and continue to improve. So then our goals are obviously to move those areas that are underutilized to utilize, which would be our certificate administrators. Um, and the which again, as positions come open, that those are our opportunities to improve there. Um, but how we're going to do that type of thing is, or in terms of improving um our sort of recruitment and ac- acquisition of getting people to join us is going to be multi um sort of a multi-pronged approach. The first is to really focus on recruitment. So that's a critical first step in ensuring a diverse workforce. And so we're going to continue to try to cast a wide net, and try to find different avenues to store certificates, classified and other staff. We have found success with the Broke Your Own program, which I know you've heard from us before, um, which is where we have pair educators. And if you look back further up at our data, you don't need to move it, Andrea, you take it one. Um, it does show that our parent educator population is more diverse than our certificate population. So we have achieved some of the diversity growth that you've seen through the development of our own staff, um, which, you know, further cements for us to be are a educational institution that believes in self-growth and that is also improving um our demographics here in terms of our goals. The other thing is looking at where we are uh focusing our recruitment efforts. And that's college job fair. We have looked at historically back colleges and universities. That's something we're going to continue doing. Uh, but we're also, there's some Native American colleges where we think we may have some success, as well as some veteran um job fair. And the veteran population being veteran, military veterans tend to be more diverse uh teacher population for those who are looking for teaching divisions. And then then we would see a typical teacher job there. So that's actually a good resource for us. Um, the other thing is we are trying to build our relationship with local colleges, universities, and trade schools to connect with students of color before perhaps they pursue the educational career um or if they're in a nursing program, just so that they have on their radar that schools are a place where you where you can find work and be successful and have a meaningful career and really help and contribute to the development of our future through our youth. Um, irrespective of your passion. So as I said, there are tech specialists that have a brilliant math ability next to me. Um, there are finance administrators, there are custodians, nurses, there are a lot of other jobs in school myself, you know, H R that maybe aren't teachers, but also we hope to encourage people to join the teaching profession. Recognizing that the trade area is one that we're particularly low in with utilization of women. We have been able to identify um the women in trade fair, which is organized by the Washington Women in Trade. And we did have, they had a virtual auction, so we participated in that, just so that our name is out there. Um, we haven't had openings, but we're hoping to either draw someone in for our custodial groups or for our maintenance and operations. We're just looking at other avenues to increase the diversification of our workforce through recruitment. The next piece is just collection strategy. And a lot of that comes down to ensuring that our hiring process um is robust and then that we guide our hiring teams to include best practices for forming a diverse hiring community. So that's including diverse people on the committees that are making the hiring decisions. It is actively, we want people that goes to retention if they are people of color or from different backgrounds. We want them to be comfortable when they're here. We think we are actively looking for those people who have um robust understanding or robust cultural competency. Because once they're here, we want them to stay here. We want them to feel a part of our community, and we want our community to be able to navigate different cultures as well. So I mean, that's something that we have to be looking for in those we hire, while we simultaneously work with our population to grow their own competency um and work on a physical vice, which is something that the district and people, I think, were that's a focus for us and has been. Um, and the other thing is we continue to review each year with our partners um with M I A our job descriptions to remove any non-job related requirements uh for employment and advancement. So there aren't any arbitrary or systemic barriers. And that's just going to be ongoing work, because as things change, we want to ensure that we don't have systemic barriers built into our system. Um, and that goes all the way down to looking at our application stages to ensure that a tool has an overlay and we run over our application portal. If um, so and then, as I said, in terms of retention strategy, it's just trying to make sure that we have a inclusive um culture in our district. Um, and that's inclusive people ideas and different backgrounds. And so we are working the staff to heighten appreciation for value of the virtue brings for our community. Um, we are also going to continue with our efforts to understand why we have employee attrition and through exit interviews. And we will continue to provide learning opportunities for our staff and advancement opportunities with regard to, without regard to protected status. So again, that is continuing to foster our internal pipeline and part of our um to be a to be a teacher or other things with our district, within our district. We've all got people who are having one, who are the parents, and we come back to do our student um work as an S O P. So it's great making sure that people have those opportunities to grow. Um, we can that engenders them to the district and us to them. So that's sort of a high level overview. And then also attached are all the procedures which is required of the these sort of checklist that's provided by O S P I. And it's said a lot of this is pretty formal. Um, that is because we're following the flow of what is articulated. I just apologize that we don't have more consistent comparative data, because that may get more confusing for those who are trying to evaluate our um effectiveness effectiveness and growth in the area.
Thank you. Uh, any questions from students, directors?
Uh, the only comment I would make is in the four years I've been here, I've seen a bigger strive for um students not only being on the hiring committees, but different types of students, whether that be race or gender or um all of this. So I'm seeing more, especially from my clubs like B S U and E car. So I appreciate that. Um, I think the point of students seeing teachers that look like them is a positive. And when there are students in those interviewing committees who are able to see different types of of candidates, that's powerful. So I've seen more students and more um diverse students in those um these past couple of years. So I know the data sometimes is small, but a hard um a small example. So even one or two staff meetings, that can be a data now. But I know that at least at the high school, the administrators are making uh efforts to ensure that student voices are in those um hiring um parts.
Yeah, and just add on, um, you can see the changes it makes when you have a teacher that looks like you. I know on birthday at school, my brother came home and he said, oh, my gosh, I have an Indian teacher this year. He was so excited. So just like even one, even a couple, it's just so good to have that representation. And it means a lot to me that you're working and paying attention. So just like even one, even a couple, it's just so good to have that representation and it means a lot to me that you're working and paying attention to these numbers.
Thanks, David. I, I know that we're all really, we care about this issue and that we're working really hard on it. And I just wanna pull out some of the highlights I see and where maybe we can. We further strengthen our system. And one of the things I see that on page eleven, I believe, in Goals by Job. In that, you know, sometimes the way, if you look at under, yeah, it's page ten, actually. Sometimes the way we word things and I apologize, I'm, I'm coming out of a flu, so I don't know if my mind is muddled or not. But when I read this section, it was kind of hit me wrong in the sense where. When I see the Goals by Job under Certificate Administrators. It says, within the next four years, the district hiring goal for this group will be to hire qualified female candidates. That maintains its utilization. But then it says, in order to once again have achieved utilization of minorities, the district would need to hire. So it just sounds like one is that we're gonna do it and one is it's just not as strong. And it's like, if we want to achieve this, we would have to do this. So I would just like to keep kind of the same tones, like we are gonna hire, you know, to make sure that we. And so just be a little bit more strong in our language and be more intentional. And so that kind of goes to the, my second point about, I recognize that this employment pool availability. And how we overutilize or underutilize as an OSPI thing and we measure ourselves against it, I think is a good start. But I really like that graph that you showed, Aaron, where it shows the actual demographic of our student body. And it would be important for us to keep our own measurement, our own benchmark of how well we're doing regardless of what OSPI says that we need to or not do. But I think that we should have our own internal goal of where we want to be. And so with that. Right, if, if we have, I think the data says that we have close to thirty percent of our students are API students, right? How are we making sure that we're tracking all of our teachers and administrators? And then when we talk about minorities and we lump us all together as a whole. You know, having, you know, if we're having a lot of, a lot of Asian kids. And then we're hiring different, you know, minorities, that doesn't reflect them. It doesn't mean that all minorities look at each other and feel the same sense of connection either, right? So we just have to be very intentional about our student demographic. And if we really truly reflect their lived experience and needs, we have to really target. You know, the experience, not target as in racial quotas, but we're targeting the experience that they bring, that cultural experience that they bring. And make that as part of the hiring process. So I just wanna make sure not to lump all minorities together. And I said, you know, my sons, they love seeing Vietnamese cooks and custodial staff. They know some of them by names. They come home and they say, oh. I got to say hello to our cook in Vietnamese. I love that, you know, but I also would like for us. To see that in their teachers as well. And not like when we see how well we do as a district, we lump all the staff together. And finally, I also, I know that we talk about these strategies and I feel like these are the same strategies that we've been doing, we're trying. We're consciously looking for recruitment and retention. But I don't feel like it has really changed much since the last time it was presented. And so if we're not gonna do anything different, we're gonna get the same results. And so, you know, I, I don't know what we, we need to do. But I, I think that if we really say that we're intentional, recognizing that our student body is growing. And that we care about this. We just have to make this a priority and lay it out better. And I think we have a lot of good opportunities coming up with some of the, the higher. Like assistant principal, principal searches in the future. I would like to see a little bit more intentionality with those search. Because from a board member and I think from a lot of community members, they feel like the process was so quick. That they didn't know how to get involved or what was part of it. So that would be something. That I would like to see is. Just to really call out how we have changed the process to make sure that we are really hitting the needs. Of our students to have also, like you said, the sense of belonging is to see reflection of themselves at all level. Of the education process.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for the very thorough report and for the, the very thoughtful approach that's been taken. But also to acknowledge that, that the, the economic climate or the budget situation that we're in is, is not lending itself to be able to like. Recruit fabulously across the country. If we, for example, had a cut certificated administrative positions in the last couple of years and unfortunately that. That sometimes, you know, like last hire, first hire, right? Like, like some of them were. The less senior administrators that got cut, which is, you know, you know, kind of. Colorate. So, so just acknowledging that. That that's an additional challenge that we think right now is different as we remain committed to these goals. It's just an extra fall in the air.
I am, no, Tam, I appreciate your sentiments. My, and I don't disagree, I just, I, I, I wonder if they're just. Should be placed at a different place. And, and the reason I say that is, you know, we had the same experience during our superintendent search. And really wanting to find diverse candidates and why we went with a search consultant, I think that, that we did. I don't wanna speak for everyone, but, but seemed to be the general, I mean, that was a priority. And just didn't get the applicant, the, the diverse applicants that, that we were hoping to get and. Not that it had any effect on our decision, but, but I think that that. You know, it, it, it makes me really sad to see when our API students don't have representation of their staff, but. But I also happen to know that we have such a low number of API people applying for the jobs. So I don't know, I mean, we can only evaluate people that apply for our jobs, right? And, and our, our staff, our HR staff can go to these, to these recruitment fairs. But I think, I, I mean, I think we have to take a step back and say, why aren't. People who look like our students going into teaching? And, you know, why aren't our students going into teaching? And so, so that we have a workforce that looks like us. And has those different life experiences. So. So I just, I, I, I don't think you're pointing any fingers. I just, I just wanna. You know, cause I've asked a lot of questions in terms of, and, and it's not reflected in the report in terms of. You know, when hiring principals, how many, how many, what was the diversity of the candidate pool of who actually applied? And it's extraordinarily not diverse. And so. You know, I mean, in a lot of ways, we had a lot of discussions. I, I can't remember if they were on public or private, but. But the sentiment I think is, is there to talk about here is, you know, why do we deserve that? Why do we deserve these diverse candidates if we're not going to bring them into our community and make sure that we provide. You know, great working experience. And so I guess, I, there's so many entry points along the way. I know I'm babbling at this point, but. But why aren't, why doesn't our workforce? Why doesn't our available workforce look like our students? And, and I could probably hypothesize a few reasons, but. But it doesn't. And so I just wanna be very concerned of not kind of. Casting stones where we. Our HR department, you know, goes through applications that they receive. And I know that there's a lot of people reaching out to applicants, but we can only hire from. What we receive. So I, I would take, I mean, I don't disagree with you, Tam, in terms of like, if we're gonna get the same numbers all the time, why are we spending time formulating? I think having the policy shows the intention. And that shouldn't be dismissed, but also clearly it's not working at this level of the application. Process. So, you know, does it go back to, you know, students. Graduate programs for teaching? Does it go back to try and, you know, advocacy with our legislature in terms of actually paying our staff a, a living wage? So people want to go into the field? I just, I think it goes back way farther than what we're doing here. So I think the policy is important. But I wouldn't put too, I, I don't put too much on it because we can only hire who applies.
Yeah, I, I just a couple of thoughts. I mean, one sort of echoing both what Deb, Ron and Tam said. I think in order to get a more diverse pool, I mean, that's a systemic, longer-term. Change that's, that's necessary. I think something for like the region to work in partnership. With schools early in the pipeline. And trying to persuade more undergraduates to go into teaching. And why they should become teachers, so that we have an applicant pool that is more in line with our demographics. The second, which hasn't been talked about mainly because it's not in the old PI table. How should we be thinking about sexual identity and orientation? It, it, it's not mentioned and when we're thinking about. Staff that reflects the student body, it seems like a larger mission.
Yeah, and I can address that and that it, it isn't one of. The gender is something that is identified, the comparative data, including other than male or female, those were the two options. So it's difficult to compare ours, but actually those who identify as near those categories don't appear. As counting either one. So while I do have that data to the extent that it was disclosed. We don't have anything to compare against. So the only thing we can feasibly compare it against would be our own student data to the extent we are aware how students are identifying themselves. So there's that information. It, it is something that we have an expectation that there not be any discrimination with their legal requirement because people based on their. Gender or sexual orientation. So, and I think that our. I don't believe that we have discriminatory practices in hiring. And so I'm proud of what we've done. I also just wanted to highlight in the perspective of. I, I hear what you, Tam, and you directed, Lori, Director, again, sorry, Tam. Are saying that like, if you keep doing the same thing and you, you can't, why are you hoping for a different result? But at the same time, I actually think we have seen growth. So though if you look at our table and go back to page nine. We have seen growth in our minority utilization. Despite the fact that the available pool continues to be majority white. And I think that's significant and I think that is not, that's in part because you're, you're concentrated and making an effort in this area. So to go from zero to six minorities and certificate specialists to thinking arbitrarily. When you have a total of thirty-two or thirty-three and forty, that almost a twenty, what, an eighteen percent increase. That's not failure. It's not where we wanna be, but it's not failure. So, and so this is work that I don't think will be done in the near term or ever. Perhaps, but it is good work and I'm actually proud of what our district has done and. Especially in light of, and I think Director Tucker, I think you referenced, when you are making reductions. That makes it very hard to attract anyone to a district. Irrespective of their ethnic, racial or gender status. Right? And it's also the first in, first out, as you said. So if you have a last in, first out, yeah. So if you got reverse minority and you're ripping and you're ma- trying to make progress. And you see you're attracting minority or people of color or more women to specific group and then you make reductions in that group. The people you just worked so hard to get are now the potential of the people you weren't releasing.
And also just knowing that there may be risks coming down the line, it's also hard to sell to the district to any.
Right.
Anyone who has, especially someone who has had a lot of different, those hired them.
Yeah, I, I totally hear about the larger systemic problem and it's real. But I think the work that we do is to make sure doing things that we can control. And I fear that sometimes when we keep pointing to, oh, it's just a larger system problem. You know, we can only get those who apply. It's kind of a cop-out and not really holding ourselves to higher standards. You know, I see as teachers of color working all across the other districts, right? And so then we are coveted, we should be a coveted district to work for. The question we should ask is like, why are these teachers working for Kent or Federal Way or Renton and not for Mercer Island? Right? When in theory we're paying more and we have wonderful students. And so those are kind of questions that we should ask and to see how we can increase. So otherwise, we're, if we're just like, well, that's just how it is. And I think we're meeting the, uh, uh, overutilization. Then I, I don't think it is. You know, we have to really double down on this if we want to get anywhere close to where we wanna be with. You know, reflection of our students. So I'm just not, I'm, I'm not saying that there isn't a larger systemic problem. But I, I also think that there should be more urgency in this and just to take ownership on where we can control. And if there's, and I would guarantee you, let's say, if I was to go out there to recruit. I would find you, you know, ten Asian, you know, teachers. And so the people that we choose to recruit for us is also going to their network. And so that's kind of, and if we just kind of put it out generically. You know, and if people don't really know who we are, and this goes back to maybe we don't know who we are. If we just kind of recruit genetically, then the, when we're gonna get generic result back. And so I just, you know, just pushing us to. Focus a little bit more on areas that we have control and on the system level, we don't have control. But if we just kind of leave everything to things we can't control, then really, we don't need to be in this position, right? Why are we here for this job?
Yeah, I guess maybe building off that would be useful is when we look at like general fund balance, we have comparison to other districts. So to sort of, you know, hold ourselves to account, recognizing that there's larger systemic issues. But then also in the, the narrow sense, how are we sacking up to neighboring districts? And then, you know, perhaps being able to drill down on, i- if we don't stack up favorably, you know, why that may be the case.
I think the, probably the simplest way to do a comparison like that is we're all required to go through this analysis. And so it'd be comparing the utilization of other districts as compared to us. Which obviously we did not do for this before, but if that's an app, that's something we can. Try to, the problem is sort of the timing as to when people release their more recent data, so potentially care, compare this ones. One I'm giving you now to the one the other districts. Will be giving or have given. So sort of next year, just say, we started this way, here we are now, because. We're not gonna be well timed with our normal district.
We can compare our business to theirs.
Yes, I'm saying.
So we did this, we changed timeframe to five years for this. I remember that board meeting where we decided to do the circle of five years as opposed to we did it. Nearly, but we wanted to look at the five-year difference. Just so that we knew this was a long-term thing. Yes, and yeah, and I, I do appreciate as, as Maggie Ty said, we, we got hit with COVID and. Reduction enforced that kind of derailed our five-year plan. So, but I do, I do think, you know, over five years, our expectations generally might have been higher. In terms of diversity makeup. And that's a concern. I, I do appreciate the idea of comparing to other districts, even at a. Rough level, you might pick two or three of these categories where we are clearly. Out of bounds, I think, I think students are reflected on teachers. Certified and classified as perhaps an interesting metric and then. Perhaps administrative stuff and those might be three reasonable criteria to. Look to other districts on and even if there are lost years numbers, that's, that's fine to compare to this. I think in terms of. This report, we, we spent a lot of time on availability numbers and things like that. I think again, it makes the report very confusing and it makes it very hard, yeah, just hard to understand. I think the simple, the simple graph might be better for us, at least for the board meeting. Where we can see the comparison across time, you know, five years ago, last year, this year and other districts overlay. I think that might be helpful for us and would speed up the, the meat of this discussion, which we can then go into talking about how we recruit. I think the, the other final question I had is. I appreciate there's a lot of RCWs listed in this. So there's a lot of reference to, to legal work that we are doing this for. Is this an actual template from O S P I that we are following?
Yeah, O S P I provides a checklist, and so we're basically going through the required subjects, so it it doesn't have um, their.
So we're following their template.
Yeah, as do other districts. At any other district and.
Which is why it doesn't contain the gender issue, nobody will have that either.
Correct, so and.
Does uh, O S P I aggregate all this, they aggregate on financials in so many ways and provide it up on a website. Does O S P I aggregate this across districts and provide it?
They, the only place where you really find it is in the state report card. Not so much in an aggregate of a report like this that they release out, um.
Yeah, the the state report card or even broken down by school district. Uh, and you know, my financials, I can go pick two or three districts and compare salaries, compare fund balances. Compared on the O S P I website.
On the website, we can do that very easily on the report cards. As far as the detailed report of this particular template, that isn't as, you know, that.
I think this.
We don't record it in this in this same. Kind of way, but on the report card, so you know, doing comparison and and it it's not gonna be perfect, but doing that comparison is is. Quite easy using the report cards.
Yeah, yeah, I think that maybe we'll do this in language review, but that might be more useful for the. For the discussion than than this very uh, descriptive report, right? I I I appreciate that we have to do this anyway for O S P I.
So um, we, what we've done is a, this report is that we did it in twenty seventeen, and then we. Now this is that expired, so we had to do this report, which is very. As you said, descriptive, sort of detailed, that's what we're supposed to do, but we do an annual monitoring, which is more. Basically, I will meet more interest to the best of my ability, um, and so I've heard, you know, comparison. More to our, which would be the sort of the blue and green graph that you saw that showed our individual girls less. Concerned about utilization as to the overall population, which I understand, and then also um. More information as to how we compare this to a. Uh, a neighboring district in our immediate area, um. In terms of recruitment and what their potential utilization, I I just pulled up two and. They similarly have underutilized groups, but um, in terms of the monitoring, that I hear that that would be more helpful and that is. The reports that I give and we we on formal year, um. Go more into specifically where we've had successes in terms of, like, you know, we actually were able to recruit people into the. Teaching professional, we went to a general minority career fair, that to me is a success. So we as basically students early on in their academic period just sort of shifted. They they realized there were different opportunities in education that they hadn't thought about, right? So that's great, and if they, hopefully they come to Mercer Island when they're done, we kept in touch with them, but if not. Um, that's one more person of color in the certificate.
I think some interesting stats would be also compared to other districts, if other districts have high absolute numbers. Then clearly we could be increasing our numbers, that everybody's underutilized. But high absolute numbers in another district represent people who could be in this district as was. Uh, as Director Bovens saw you, uh, the other issue is if uh, O S P I is looking at this as an aggregate. Level and can see underutilization throughout the state. Is there anything we are holding O S P I and superintendent accountable for next time we meet him? So that we we could say this isn't working throughout your state. Regionalization is working, you're changing that, but this isn't working, uh, so uh. Are we holding him accountable for this, and that's an expectation.
A couple of things, um, as we kind of wrap up, um, one on that, I think you're seeing some of his solutions being. Hiring bonuses and and looking at recruiting teachers through monetary ways, whether or not that is. Really gonna be effective and and is it, is does that really solve the retention issue as we spoke with him last?
Oh, they're opposed to the diversion.
Right, but where, you know, in terms of where his strategy on, you know, special education has been, let's. Make it a greater incentive to join the profession, I don't know what um, the response would be in terms of. Um, you know, various um, uh, underrepresented groups, but you know, we could certainly look at that. I think that in Director Battersby and I talked about this because there's some language even in the template that. Um, I I think is somewhat outdated and that we need to take a look at in our report to be completely honest. If I go up a level and just look at, you know, what do we need to do, um, I think you're all hitting on it. One is what are we doing in this in this school district, day in and day out, what are we doing in our community? That makes someone even want to open our job, you know, search page. And to say that's a district I want to go work in. Then we get into the, how do we get them to actually accept the job, uh, when offered? And then how do we have them stay, what is it that we're doing to support our staff members so they want to stay? And and I think all of those, we have a board policy sixteen ten around diversity, we have values around equity and diversity. Um, and inclusion and access, we're talking about belonging and not just about students, but staff. Um, but we need to continue to actualize that in terms of our committees. Who are we inviting into our teaching and learning advisories, into our superintendent student advisories? Um, ensuring that what we're doing day in and day out actually matches this. Um, so that when someone looks and they see a headline about an antisemitic incident. They can then also see here was a district response to that, and that doesn't deter me from wanting to come and work for this great school district. Um, we also need to tell our story better, um, you know, we're down, you know. Considerably in terms of white students over time, we're down to fifty-one, just over fifty-one percent of our students identify as white. So the perception is Mercer Island is this white um, island where there isn't diversity in terms of ethnicity and race. Um, that is simply not true, and it's changing quickly, but. Um, we have a regional perceptual issue, and that's why we've got to continue to amplify what we're doing. Um, and amplify our story, so that's part of that communication plan, but um, you know, it has to be, what are we doing every single day?
I appreciate Asher and Andrew, Andrew spoke to uh, being part of the recruiting team. And I think student boss might play a large part in getting people to come to, sorry, Maggie Ty.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to um, probably actually mention a bunch of things that I was gonna say, but I but I do think the the regionalization is not. Separate from this issue because certainly like common learning on Mercer Island is a concern for teachers that would be concerned coming here. It would be a concern coming here, and I'm just wondering, when we interview a promising candidate and end up not choosing taking a job that we've offered them. I wonder if we like surveyed them or anything, did we say like, what were the top factors, you know, in order for why you didn't take this job? Okay, that would be kind of interesting to.
Yeah, so we we do ask teachers who decline job offers or staff that decline offers, um. Typically, what we hear is commute, um, if a if a large one for our district. Is the perception that getting here is quite challenging.
It's commute and it's not gonna be worth it.
Okay, uh, no action required of this, so we're fine. Shall we move on to full governance process, monitoring, three A. Appropriate treatment of community members.
Yes, you promoted Dana, perfect. Um, so we have operational expectation three, uh, appropriate treatment of community members. Um, there are several different points of emphasis here with the one uh, providing the most detail. Uh, really around uh, our consistent application and use of discipline policies. Uh, uh, throughout our district. As a reminder, uh, we had been reporting out on a yearly basis, but we were having trouble because. As we have used suspensions, expulsions, and classroom removals, less and less, it became harder and harder to report. In a single year because of compression data confidentiality. So you had asked us to go back and do more averages over years, so this is kind of the first year where you've seen that. So I'll turn it over to Director Prescott, um, to talk a little bit about um, our data relevant to or relative to. Uh, classroom removals.
Great, thanks. Uh, so lo- long story short, and I actually think we were able to do this last year, and so this is actually the second year because what we were able to track was. Um, a overall a ten percent decline in classroom exclusions, and a few things to note. Um, one of the things that, if you recall, changed a number of years ago, several years ago now. Um, was just the discipline law, and um, along with that was also a shift in just how we approach discipline. And whereas a student previously, if there was some type of misbehavior in a classroom, might have been sent to the principal's office. Um, really now, um, we're charged with attempting multiple other ways of addressing behavior. Prior to any type of exclusion, um, what they were finding at the state level was that students were missing out on instructional time. Um, and much of that time would be spent waiting to meet with an administrator or um, with a coach of some kind to. Help them, you know, kind of walk through their behaviors and the actions and the the possible choices and things like that, and. Um, students were missing out on too much classroom time, and so there's been a really intentional shift over the last three or four years. About um, trying multiple other means of of addressing behaviors or incidents prior to. Any type of removal from a classroom, and I think the data supports that. Um, we returned to school last year, um, kind of full time. Everybody was in school and we anticipated that there would be an uptick, having been in hybrid previously and in COVID, um. Not being in school, we thought we would see an uptick, and we actually had no uptick, in fact, it went down. Um, and so hopefully it's because kiddos were engaged and they were excited to be in school. Um, and and I also think it, kudos to our staff for really adjusting to the social emotional needs of students and. Understanding that more than anything, they needed a space to belong and that learning space is in the classroom. And so um, I think it's it's awesome news that we didn't have those exclusions last year. Um, we're also working to align our tracking systems so that we've got Swiss, which is a reporting system we use at our elementary schools. Um, and that's where, and each of the schools has a slightly different um, process for how they track incidents, whether it be on the playground. Or in a classroom or with a specialist, and now um, we're working, we've we've begun the process with district administrator. With building administrators at the district level, um, talking about kind of streamlining our processes so that they're similar, and we're sure that. What we're asking for in reporting is the same uh, at all four schools, then we're also looking to see. Um, what if anything might need to shift at the middle and high school in how we're tracking there, um, because it's really school dependent. And we want to make sure that what we report is what we have recorded in Skyward, and we want to make sure that we're getting the correct information. Um, as we look, uh, like I said. The we didn't have classroom exclusions of kiddos being taken out of class, out of the learning environment without first having. Other options presented or or tried and trying to handle whatever the situation was. Um, and if you look, the majority, uh, fifty-seven percent of all of our offenses, as they're categorized. Um, are related to drugs, alcohol, tobacco, and vaping, and so a hundred of our hundred and seventy-five total incidents. Over the five-year span that that you had asked us to track are related to drugs, alcohol, vaping, and smoking, and. Um, we've got coalitions that are on board and working with Youth and Family Services and um, the Healthy Youth Initiative. There's the Positive No Campaign, um, there are a variety of things that we're doing, trying to address that. And um, that continues to be a a major focus for us.
Well, what do you mean then, that this is that exclusion is not the sort of the initial response? Um, so when I look at the drug and alcohol related offenses, those students that. Are consuming alcohol on school premises and multiple occasions, and then how do we think about? Um, punitive measures versus treating it as um. Uh, you you know, the. Is an illness or disease that, you know, should be handled and guarded.
So I think one of the um, strengths in our partnership with Youth and Family Services is Chris Hornish's role as a drug and alcohol counselor. And so some of our students who, um, when they agree to participate in uh, addressing an issue. Then we decrease the discipline piece because they're working on the proactive side, so it's really trying to work with families and students. So that removing them from school because of um, uh, alcohol use, they may not necessarily go together. But participating with Chris, participating through a diversion program is a better alternative than missing school.
And these are either happening at school or at school.
Yes, there's some nexus to school, um, that is either disrupting the school environment. It's happening with a school-related activity or in the school itself. Um, and and those lines are becoming trickier, um, you know, by the year in terms of, you know. Something does happen off school grounds, it's on a weekend, you know, what is the um. What is the jurisdiction, if you will, that the schools have? Um, mainly what the litmus on that is, you know, what's the impact on Monday morning? If there's something that happened that that is now distracting the learning environment, making our teachers. Um, making it extremely hard for them to teach because there's all these distractions, now we do have an issue we do, we have to deal with. Or we might have two students in conflict, and one student doesn't feel like they can even come to school because of something that happened to them. Now we start to get pulled in as a school district, working in partnership um, with either M I B D or or another else that organization might be.
Is is there, I know that at least there's a, I I know there's an effort to um, bring restorative justice to. The high school, um, is the thought. Um, that it would focus on these, this level of. Behavior or or others, if you even know, yeah, I know this is just kind of.
I mean, it's all levels really, uh, Director Lurie, because. Um, it doesn't have to be a an egregious offense that requires removal for there to need, there need to be restorative practices. Um, and we do have various um, initiatives or pockets going on, if you will. You know, one of the, one of the most important aspects of the restoring practices is that you have two willing parties. And that has been one of the barriers that we've had over time. Um, whether or not that's been the dresser, who we know is just gonna go through the motions or not be authentically engaged. And do more harm, conversely, if the victim is not ready to engage or be participant, but. You know, that can happen at any level regardless of how, as I said, egregious the issue is. These are, you know, the most, um, you know, significant, um. Uh, challenging behaviors that we've encountered that have required some sort of. Um, removal from school rather than just being able to address it at what we might say the tier one level.
I have a quick question, do these numbers include like the bringing up athletic code, or is this just like? Just getting in trouble in school, but.
Yeah, they.
Go ahead, Rick Prescott.
Sorry, um, yes, so these are, these are inclusive of all.
So if a student misses time, if they're missing games, if they're breaking athletic codes.
Correct.
Yeah, I I guess like, I'm not sure what the solution is, I mean, last, I guess, spring, or whenever we had the presentation for M I Y F S. It was sobering, um, you know, see the statistics, you know, drug and alcohol use on Mercer Island. Um, and when I look at the numbers, it it's far less, um, you're you're capturing a small percentage. And I wondered to what extent it made pure punitive rather than rehabilitative in addressing an issue. And to what extent, when there's more negative repercussions, does it actually solve it? Or does it make uh, students more reluctant to seek help for themselves, um, or a friend? Um, and I don't know what the solution is, but it strikes me that expulsion generally is a pretty crude and perhaps. Antiquated strategy, um, particularly when you have uh, victimless crimes. And it's not about anyone else's safety, um, but just what uh. Um, but just what uh, a student themselves is consuming.
Yeah, you know, one of the I spent a lot of time with Chris Hornish and and Y F S counselors on talking about some of these. You know, one of the the reports that I think you're referring back to, Director Lois, is, you know, s- students self-reporting on the Healthy Youth Initiative or the Healthy Youth Survey. Um, you know, we know we have elevated rates of alcohol use. Um, it's not in coming into school as much, you know, it's it's out in the community, it it, you know, on weekends. Um, either with family, uh, friends, um, at parties. And so what is that right deterrent? Um, you know, a lot of the positive social messaging is Nancy Lee, a community member, would remind us. And that's why Y F S, the Healthy Youth Coalition's been working on some of that. But yeah, it's both from a discipline standpoint, but also how do we reduce that overall rate? Especially when we have students reporting that it's for Medicaid, you know, self-medicating reasons because of stress and anxiety. Um, that's where it even gets more poignant uh, in a negative way.
I'm I'm glad Asha brought up the um, issue of the athletic code or the code of conduct and um, you know, I just heard rumblings about, you know, obviously these are the the school related, but um, you know, we know the numbers are tremendously higher outside of school and yet students sign the athletic codes um, and the code of conduct. And yet I don't know that there's, I would just be curious to see whether or not signing, signing a code of conduct has any impact. Um, if it doesn't have an impact or much of one, I question why we do it. Cause it seems like we're saying, no, don't do this. Here are the consequences and then we won't do anything. Um. I I'm just kind of thinking aloud just because I know that there's, there's always rumblings about, you know, we've got this athletic code and different kids treated differently depending on, I don't know, whether it's poor or how good they are whatever it might be. Um, I just wonder if that's something that we might want to look at.
I think that something could be changed is the seriousness that can students take of the athletic code meeting. Um, to be a hundred percent honest, like, I don't get into an athletic code meeting every single season that um, I play. Which is done towards it or students don't go. So if there's a way we can really get attendance, maybe we start to know the series of that rather than like, people sitting together and laughing and whatever. Um. And making sure people know that there is really consequences, that it's not, and don't say, oh, don't regroup again.
And making pledges that that would be a more positive thing. Like your team itself pledges to each other.
Yeah.
Um, this is going to be our behavior through this season and then a reward system once that's accomplished. Um, seems far as I'm concerned, that it was certainly more effective than punishment. I don't know anything. Punishment doesn't seem to in fact, I I don't think should, but I I mean, I don't think punishment is the right approach, but you know, we're but I would love to see, I mean, you know, peer peer pressure in a really good way. Um, you know, could have an impact. I'd be curious to to see the students, um, you know, having those conversations.
No, I I wondered what extent, you know, code of conduct can actually be counterproductive. Um, because you know, you have perhaps a teammate who has a a drug or alcohol problem. Um, but you know, the repercussions of they're getting help for them uh, would be seen, you know, as negative and, you know, may make them, you know, depressed and consume those in greater quantities. Um, I mean, I think it's just the
And the worst thing, worst thing possibly you could do is get them off your team.
And yeah.
And they're feeling a positive.
And and it just, it it strikes me that the code of conduct and sort of how we treat some of these issues are fairly antiquated. I mean, not us, is it is there necessarily? I think water. Um, and I i- in the future, I think it would be something, you know, perhaps like for student representatives. I mean, um, you know, the, you know, talk amongst, you know, other students, like other uh, student representatives in other schools. I think it's something that could be um, perhaps reformed and changed or it's uh, more useful, more beneficial.
Something we'll we'll take a look at. I think that's really interesting point, um, especially kind of that, you know, I think we're sort of taught about the goods and marriage law, where if you see a friend who by die or is in in dire need of medical help, you can call um, and and you won't get in a shovel. But if you see a friend who's sort of declining rapidly and you're seeing them uh, suffer from this, but if you try to get help, that could backfire for your friends. Uh, Graduates that they, you know, if they got kicked off of the team or off of, you know, you have to decide if you're in leadership or who loved. And you have to get outside of school. You have to decide that if you got kicked off of that, that could just spiral. Um, even more so, it's really interesting. Um.
I feel like those are the kids that are struggling with those kinds of issues or could be really want to put or other people enter their support system, wishes moving their team.
There is a um, a group at the high school um, that Nick has overseen and is now going to kind of shift to Lindsay Blaine, but there is the Athletic Leadership Team. Um, and that's got student representation and that might be a great thing to kick to them. And uh, allow them to kind of there, it's comprised of students who are involved in sports or esports um, and activities and it might be a great place to start, um, for them to start kicking this around and see. Um, you know, and and get some perspective from student athletes as to what, what it is that they're experiencing, seeing uh, and how the athletic code does or does not uh, persuade or dissuade students from engaging and or um, what, what consequences or support or alternatives might better leverage um, a reduction.
Thank you. So that's the conclusion of the O E three report. We saw O nine, but this doesn't require.
Yes, so with this, I will entertain a version to find the superintendent in compliance. Uh, just one for the whole day.
And that we find the superintendents in compliance with uh, uh, appropriate treatment for community members.
Thank you. And uh, with that, Stephen vote.
Aye.
And board member vote all in favor.
Aye, aye.
Against. Uh, that costs us seven zero.
You know, it's not the first motion that I've ever made.
Okay, let's uh, let's move on uh, to three B.
Great, so O E nine is uh, communication and support to the board. Uh, three, fourteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen um, require the level two monitoring. We have um, staff here upon hand. So if we take a look, uh, starting with um, uh, component three, reporting to the board, the number of enrolled students who have left or chosen not to continue enrollment in the district as compared to the numbers in the previous three years. And then on even number of years, the reason students left or chose not to continue. Um, we had agreed last year and you had asked that, um, even though this wasn't a presidential year that we still, uh, because of covid and a greater inquiry. So that's why tonight's report does all, it also provides some of the rationale. So, um, Jamie, were you gonna take this or you want me to go on the um, slide deck that we have put together?
Um, I think the slide deck is probably the best way to just see the the visuals of of where and why. Um, I'm happy to jump in, but I know you have spent much time with this data, sir.
I can start and then why don't you uh, go ahead and and then continue in there. So if um, why don't I go ahead and take?
You want to share?
You got it? Okay, go ahead.
All right, it should uh, be opening right now.
As it's coming open, um, just as a reminder, there are a few different ways that we track students um, who are exiting the school district. Um, one is the incredible job that our registrars uh, and our front office staff do in the schools. Um, as families are leaving, they do the very best they can to ask um, families, um, where they're going or or, you know, what the move uh, entails. And then they make notes in our uh, database on that, um, as we are taking a look at, you know, why students have left. The other one is, you know, twice a year, we continue to survey our families. So any family that leaves the school district between September first and January thirty first. And then from February first to August thirty first, uh, we break those into two different cohorts. So what you're seeing in the first um, slide here are the overall number of students who withdrew from the school district, not including our seniors who graduated. So we had two hundred and fifty-five students in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two who withdrew from the school district. And then uh, we've kind of compressed the data into the different themes of where uh, students are going. Um, you can see our our three largest, um, representing students who are going to private school, students who are moving into a new district in the state, and then those who have moved out of the state or the country completely with some smaller fractions um, from there. If we go down then to the next slide, we're going to see the um, data uh, in slide three, which has to do with um, the September to January timeframe. That tends to be where we lose fewer students because that, you know, the the bulk of those might be at the transition around a winter break. Um, but that's not where we see as many. It's really in the next one, they're on slide four. And that's where we're capturing the February through the summer, um, the data on there on slide, yeah, slide four, there we go, there we go. So you get February through August, excuse me, on um, on this particular graph. So it just kind of breaks it out. You can see the the large difference, two hundred and ten versus forty-five um, who have reported. These are all self-reports. So then when we go down to slide five, um, this is where we started incorporating in all of the data. Um, and we start to try to look at what's happening um, from semester one to semester two in terms of percentages. Uh, and then you can see it over a three-year timeframe rather than just a year um, there. So being able to see what's happened, obviously, um, and you can see the two kind of covid years there of three, three hundred ninety-nine and three hundred ninety-one, and then a drop off um, in the last school year down to two hundred fifty-five exiting the school district.
When you say new district and state, does that mean um, they moved out of district? Or the family moved out of district or they are in another district, like, could they apply with open enrollment or something?
It's majority is they've moved. However, um, Director Prescott, you handle a lot of the choice transfers. Have you seen an uptick in choice transfers to other districts or have they been pretty consistent over time?
It's pretty consistent over time. Um, you know, a few students, um, they, you know, they have a a co-op with homeschooling where a student can enroll in another district uh, through choice transfer and be fully enrolled online and then have some homeschool supports. We don't have a robust homeschool system. We're a small system and so, um, you know, but that number hasn't spiked. Uh, we haven't seen a big increase in that uh, since before covid. Um, and you know, periodically, we, I would say we get a handful, like probably fewer than five um, students who leave the district because their parent uh, or guardian works in another district. Uh, conversely, we receive uh, quite a few staff member students into the district um, for our staff members who live elsewhere and then come in and bring their students with them. So we've not seen a a drop or loss of students in that way. It's really based on moving.
This next chart then just gives you uh, the bar ground kind of comparison. Obviously, we're looking for, you know, fewer students choosing to leave the district um, over time. And you can see where the two years where we were probably impacted by covid um, in terms of in-school learning, hybrid learning, um, uh, versus um, completely online. So in some areas, we've definitely seen a reduction in families choosing to leave the school district. Um, the other uh, area that we are tracking and monitoring are private school enrollments. And um, one thing that we have worked really hard is to um, expand our search and reach out to more school districts than ever before. And so you can see we made a pretty significant um, push to access more private schools and and kind of see where our students uh, are going. Um, but obviously we have five hundred and sixty-eight students who are potential um, public school students who are choosing a different option um, over time. I think when you start to look at the next chart and you get a sense of, you know, where are these students going? Uh, obviously, the largest number of our students are attending St. Monica uh, Catholic School. The next large um, pie there, those are a conglomerate. Those are many, many schools with ten or fewer students. Um, uh, that we kind of compress together. A French-American school, or a post-shiva Seattle Academy, that kind of works around there. So we have to continue to think, I was just sharing with the um, with a private school uh, head of school this week who I was meeting with and then with the P T A. I also shared that, you know, at no other time uh, have I seen as much competition for education. And uh, it was certainly a lot greater in my previous uh, states where I was because the charter schools were such a uh, just a much bigger presence uh, in our school district. And we were competing, but the number of private schools that have really popped up, we don't have the charter school um, piece, but we do have a lot of online schools. And so we have to continue to think about our school district and that's why I've been using the term amplify what we're doing, elevate what we're doing and helping all of our students thrive. Because we have to continue to tell a better story um, of of our schools and not expect people to just automatically attend. Um, they have choices. The economy has been doing well. And um, we have families with the means to make those choices, whether or not it's private school, um, online schools or to choose right here. I think it's interesting, this year I was looking at some data just recently that we have fifty-nine students. As we started looking at this year's um, enrollments, we believe that there are at least fifty-nine students who are kindergartners who are choosing a private option right today. How do we find those students and attract them to choose first grade in one of our four elementary schools? Um, I'll be meeting with NIPPA and actually going uh, giving some presentations about the school district to MIPA to also capture our preschoolers in January and February. Um, uh, Ian and I are already talking about uh, ramping up our communications to really broadcast out our enrollment, January thirty first for our new kindergartners uh, and really start to push uh, and and we're going to have to sell our district and continue to put it out there. Because um, you know, if we don't tell the story, someone else will. And as Director Booby and I were on a phone call earlier today, um, with some, some parents, uh, advocates of ours and and great champions. Uh, they were reminding us of that, that we have to tell that story and continue to get it out there. So I know that's part of the communication plan you wanted from me and that I continue to work on. Um, and and like I said, that includes meeting with these private school leaders. Um, they're not adversaries. Um, they're partners in many ways, but we are competing for the same students. What can we do differently? What can we do better so that we can continue and bring our students here? Which increases enrollment, increases revenue, increases um, hiring staff, going back to our earlier conversation.
I think it's really interesting to note that um, the top three, and and I know that some of the catch-all category um, is also either either religious or religious-based or culturally specific cultural-based, which, you know, that's a draw that that I think overall would have a very unlikely. Uh, if people are looking for that type of education, they're looking for that type of education that that a public school can't provide. But what I would um, look with this opportunity is in what ways can we partner with them? Um, whether it's St. Monica's, they're K eight, right? Um, and uh, and then also Yeshiva is, I know they have at least basketball, but you know, do many of their students come here and um, do other sports? Because it, because they're small and don't offer them. And and I don't know, I mean, I don't know if that's anything that anyone has an appetite for, but but um, you know, they are, I think for the most part, um, many live on islands. And um, to just be an inclusive community, um, would only benefit us.
And we certainly partner with them when it comes to um, federal and state funding. Um, title one, title two, title three, special education. Um, you know, they do have access to that on funding source and sort of learning services that are maintaining partnerships certainly through that as well. And um, thank you for this data. Like, I think, like, I, I recognize you are, there's not a time uh, to assemble that, and I think it's super helpful. Um, I think it'd be valuable going forward. Uh, the one area that I think like that'd be interesting perhaps explore is those that are going to other districts in the, the state. I mean, find out if it's the area and if they were attracted at all to other neighboring public school districts. And if so, what aspects? Um, but yeah, I think this is uh, yeah, like a a lot of data here and recognized a lot of work um, went into assembling it, and I think very useful.
Um, I wanted to just turn in and say that I think certainly true that people send their kids to the French-American schools, to the Yeshiva specifically cultural and language reasons, but that St. Monica's is a little bit different from, from like competitive standpoint, you know, like um, I know a number of district families who move their kids there during, in the sort of pandemic because of their, you know, online program and other, and maybe they were a Catholic family anyway, so it was something they had considered previously. Some of them have come back and some of them have not yet come back. So, so another question is like, can we reach out to those families and find out why they have to come back? What is maybe missing or what do they not know about that we're actually doing in the district that might need to be given to kids? So I also think that in general, if you want to draw in families of kindergartners and first graders, you need way more school pets. Because my daughter started a kindergarten at Open Window, and she asked to come back to the, we're very happy to ever come back to the district, but she's in fourth grade now, and she's still with the biology classroom test. So just saying, know your market there.
Uh, Chad has our hand raised. Adam, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you, David. Um, kind of similar work to Maggie Ty saying, you know, as we're looking at this and, oh, before this, thank you, Fred. I, uh, this is super helpful, and I'm glad that you're really um, intentionally looking at this and seriously thinking about how do we better sur- serve our students? Because uh, when I look at this, I just not only see students leaving, but I also see the amount of money that parents are putting out instead of, you know, uh, so that's to me, I'm like, oh, my goodness. Uh, as a parent on Mercer Island, they should, you know, they deserve a good public school here. And to put extra money out for private school at this level, it's um, for me, that's also an extra uh, burden for parents. But um, so when I see like Hamlin Robinson uh, school, you know, students leave there for uh, move there for a very specific reason, right? And so maybe a couple of years ago, we may not have met their needs and they left, but I don't know if we have done anything since that may uh, currently meet their needs now. And so how do we reach out to them and update them about what we're doing? Because like you said, we have to do a better job of marketing, and sometime it takes a couple of years to catch up based on like people's perception of us and what we did in the past. And so uh, kind of what Maggie Ty was saying is like, understanding what, uh, why people left, and then specifically kind of target to say, hey, you know, we didn't do very well uh, in this, you know, a couple of years ago, but since then we have made progress in this area. And so I think that would be really helpful for parents who left for specific reasons um, to pull them back because uh, this is a really large amount of uh, students, and I think there's always maybe some who goes to private school. But uh, I don't think it should be this much. And so I'm glad that we're being serious about how can we be a better public school so that stu- people don't feel like they have to spend the extra money to get the education that they need.
Yeah, the cause. So uh, I just done a census check a little bit back ago. So just FYI, uh, population of First Island, US Census told us only under five years old. Subtract those out and plus only over eighteen, subtract those out. So you get uh, cool about uh, four thousand five hundred some students. Uh, MSD enrolled was three thousand, four thousand approximately. So you're, you're pretty much found every kid. Uh, it was a positive skill. Yeah, so congratulations.
You know, very, and then Cena, uh, who works in learning services, Michelle Mueller. Um, there's a huge team that works on this um, and, and helps to put this together. So I certainly want to make sure that uh, we share that credit to that team who's working and then um, to all of our schools who will be out, you know, really trying to get, get kindergartners enrolled, attract back uh, some of those first graders. And then we know that there's some critical years, that fifth to sixth grade is a great choice point for families. From eighth grade to ninth grade is another choice point. And what can we do um, you know, to work? So uh, coming up uh, January nineteenth, eighth graders looking to find out more about the high school. We'll be having open house, open hours for families to come in. So we'll be promoting that. Um, and really thinking about um, embracing the fact that we know people are shopping schools. And we can be mad and say, you know, they should just come because we're great. That's not the reality anymore. They want to know why we're great and what we're gonna do for their children. So uh, we'll be working on that.
With that kindergarten number being so high, I, I'd be curious to know um, how many, I know, I know, you know, many parents send their kids to kindergarten, you know, whether it's summer birthdays or just um, you know, concerned that they're not quite ready, and then they have that extra year assessed. They're gonna send them to kindergarten, public school or first grade. Um, so with that number being so high, I would just be curious.
Yeah, and how many because of COVID? You know, an extra year. So we're, that's why I'm trying to be with NIPA to get a sense of who their kids are in their preschools, um, to get a better handle.
And I, I appreciate all the student voice. I, I'm sure that will be compelling to bring uh, other students here to students want to be with their peers and uh, they'll fight their parents in, in many cases. Well, yeah, athletics helps for their peers. So I think we've got a, a huge amount of selling points for sure.
Yeah.
And thank you for, for all this work. This is tremendous.
Um, so we'll move on to fourteen, which is our uh, Public Records Act. Um, you've asked that the school district provided to you on an annual basis, the number of requests, um, costs and what that's looked like. So um, Director Batterfield, turn that over to you to uh, walk us through what you've seen from the public record side of um, things. Again, um, huge support by Michelle um, Ruby um, and others who have uh, worked extremely hard. I think we're getting better and better with our um data for you on this, uh, getting closer and closer to um, being accurate. And then we're also gonna be using some of your software coming up. That's even gonna make it better. So turn it over to you.
Yeah, um, as you can see, we are consistently between last year and um, this year, we're in the upper, in the eighties for public records requests. And I want to highlight that this is not um, our per count requests, which are those where parents ask for their students' records. So those are not reflected here. So there's many other requests that aren't reflected in all of those due in fact take time. Um, with respect to our costs, uh, we have had an increase in cost. Some of that I think is because we are doing a better job of uh, accounting for our staff time to process the requests. I mean, just because of the volume of um, pages that we have. You see, we have a hundred and uh, one, one hundred thirteen thousand six hundred twenty-seven pages which were produced. But to put it in perspective, there's easily at least fifty percent more pages that have to be reviewed in order to reduce that page number. Um, so that, that's sort of where we are in terms of um, public record is Superintendent Ronald just alluded to, we're gonna be moving to a electronic system for monitoring this because we are now having uh, record requests efficient to need the threshold for JLR reporting because we're exceeding a hundred thousand dollars and that will, there's more tracking requirements with that in terms of cost, age, time, and what have you. So we're, we're moving towards something called Q A, which will hopefully enable us to um, better uh, serve the population, but also track this data because just making the reports um, for JLR, that takes a fair amount of time when you're manually doing it. Because we still handle record request and then we scan the document and then we're using Adobe Pro to put the little boxes on it. Then we manually have to do and log, do you do, do you do on Excel spreadsheet? So um, just given the volume of requests that we are getting, um, it makes sense to move that direction. Actually, the whole of it will be a cost saving. That's the overall header. And in terms of the class, we are going to be exploring, this is just updates not covered in this policy. We just updating our policy to ensure that we're recording what costs we are really allowed through policy. But I think that will come to you guys um, early next year, if I'm not mistaken, just so that um, because if this is a burden, um, and we're all, that we want to serve and provide the best report, um, and be a resource to the public, there's a cost to that.
So we're looking at multiple districts on that to see what other districts have done. And then the language we'll bring to you um, is gonna coincide with this. Like, we didn't want anyone to feel like we were retaliating. And I think we just need to be honest to say, we're spending a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars a year just on record requests. And so what can we do to offset some of that?
So why is the amount so high in fourteen fifteen?
Uh, twenty fourteen, sorry. Twenty fourteen, that was before I joined the district. Um, it's my understanding that was one of the reasons why I was brought into the district.
There were a couple of requests on that one over that period of time that really escalated that and required um, a tremendous amount of outside legal support. And so our legal costs that year were exponentially high because.
And that's so.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, are there any? You know, there's, I mean, overall, I think, you know, it's, we put this down, but in looking at the, i- it's clear what the reason is for the request. Um, the ones that are extraordinarily high to the point of like, that's actually staff because it comes from general fund.
Are you wanting to touch on being? Are you looking?
Yeah, sorry. I'm looking at a specific request.
Yeah.
Um, I guess I'm wondering, uh, well, first of all, do you have information whether or not the information requested, and, and feel free to focus on the big ones because I think the little ones are, are granted sleeper. Um, whether or not it's being used, and I know that's not a criteria. We don't need to decide that. I get that. I wish the legislature would have some sort of, would be with them, if you know. Um, and then also, you know, like, are, are people even picking up the information once they ask for it? So this, I mean, I just, you know, it's not, the intention is not to be shaming, um, but, but hopefully there's an awareness that, that this money is directly taken from our, our kids' education. And if it could be found somewhere else, if the information could be found somewhere else, um, please do so. And the more specific requests possible, um, you know, that's down these gigantic numbers astronomically. Um, and I guess just, you know, i- if it's from a couple of different people, have there been strategies uh, to try and um, see if there's a different way to meet some concern?
And so I can address that. Um, you know, if, if a request is abandoned, it most of the time we can't provide all, but we don't provide all the pages on a single day. So we don't provide all the records on the single day. So what happens is if we do them in summer, if they, a requester doesn't pick up the installment and we inform them again, we can consider it abandoned and just let them know it's considered abandoned. That does happen. I don't believe that it happened this year. I don't see that it's noted here. Um, with respect to narrowing um, requests, we do try to work with requesters to um, and when I say we, I'm not the record officer at this point, um, in time that we have a new record officer who just recently started, I mean, it's uh, Ruby Peters. And then formerly prior to that, it was Michelle, well, it was Lynn Gerken, then Michelle Mueller. Um, and then I would be for that. So, but we do work with the requesters to try to really narrow the request so that we would narrow the amount of responsive records. We think it really takes a lot of time to weed out unresponsive records. Um, and I think the only thing that we can do is to continue to do that. Um, and because we're happy to give you whatever's there as a, and speaking on behalf of, I think, all the record officers, everyone's decision. We don't want to hide anything. We're happy to tell us what you want and we'll give it to you. Um, so try to be a specific step forward because we have to go find these um, these records in mountains of emails and what have you, um, which is not necessarily uh, easy. And then there are record requests that um, are just, we don't know why, and we're not gonna know why. I don't know what the use is. Um, we just do our very best to fulfill them in a timely and accurate way, um, and meet the interest of the requester. So.
Some of the requesters are requesting from districts here across the country or even across the region. And so, you know, we will talk with other school districts to see, are we getting it with the same requests? And again, we don't always know where that information's gonna go to. If I go back to OB three, I think that, address your second part of your question, Director Laurie. Um, with respect to relationships with parents and citizens, the superintendent will maintain an organizational culture with expectations and practices that treat parents and citizens with respect, dignity and courtesy. And I think we work, you know, extremely hard to do that. I will definitely be honest with you and um, you don't know this, but um, you know, to the extent that that's a hundred percent is, you know, it's not. We have some families who, we, our relationships are not as strong and, and um, something that we do see are, then we might see public records requests coming up on some of those. And um, we do try to work with, with families and again, not be adversi- adversarial, not be retaliatory, but also um, you know, we're not trying to hide anything, but there, there are some times when, you know, records are abundant, when you have Google Chat, emails, um, you know, phone logs, whatever they may be. There are so many documents now, um, and Reeves and, and the team and um, on the tech side who pulls all of these records. Um, as you said, Director Batterfield, it's hundreds and hundreds um, of pages for a request. And then sometimes it's just thousands of pages. And they'll have to be reviewed, even though they're not responsive because they might be.
Right. So just as, as words of, of caution and hopefully kind of paying attention to the impact um, and wanting people to get the information that they, they should have that. It, it seems like the multiple year requests are some of these giant ones, and if they could be, you know, limited to the actual specific timing rather than this like crew for all of, I wanna see the history of Marsha Island's school district. Um, and I, I'm not trying to make light. I just want to see the dollars go into our kids. Um.
It, it seems like what, you know, could be beneficial is um, though I was not a litigator when I was in the practicing law. I mean, but something, you know, sort of a kind of, you know, evidentiary rules and procedures, having sort of a, a regional statewide uh, position that would narrow the request to find out what is, you know, the documents that are trying to be obtained um, that are most relevant. And at least, you know, take the first cut of that, and perhaps those are, you know, all the responsive records can be much more narrowly um, versus, you know, just blasting out to try to get the, you know, the, the records that are really helpful.
What a legislature, well. One of the most, yeah, I know that's a shame. But the most concerning one for me here is the many requests about information about teacher trainings, like staff trainings, because if every time we have a staff training, you get a public records request immediately afterwards for that costs like as much as the training again, that's just killing us budget-wise, right? Like, here's a request related to staff training that cost forty-six thousand dollars, right? Like.
And you're making it a record.
Records regarding, regarding staff.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it is a record, I guess, but I just, I wonder whether maybe there's a way to make the staff training information more easily visible so that it doesn't have to be done. It was, do a record request. I don't know. Like, that just seems to me to be a particularly problematic area since it's, since we train our teachers and our other staff over like, hopefully all the time. There's just like a ton of training going on, on all these areas. So.
Well, I think, I do want to to emphasize that I, I think our record officers can do a pretty good job of trying to narrow their questions. Sometimes people are more interested or less interested in doing that. Um, I will say we've had some requesters who've been, that's like, actually, no, I don't need any bus. So I think they might. Right? And that's more in the purple land, but you know, so there, there's varying degrees of willingness to do that. And we, we have made changes as we get requests. We've probably made changes in how we organize records, um, but sometimes that's challenging because now we are changing how our records are created, how they're labeled, how to maintain. How they're labeled, how to maintain, just because they may be requested. We're still creating staff costs and we're making it a more cumbersome system. And so that we can get it to people so that we we do try to learn so we can be better. But I will just say with respect to staff training, having had a request that I managed related to that. It can be challenging if you ask where I want staff training regarding unstable bouncing ball. Right? Well, it there could be basketball training. The training doesn't have the name bouncing of all. So you have to then look up what was the agenda? You have to try to go figure out, and if you're the record officer, you don't, you didn't live those trainings. So it becomes this process and it takes a fair amount of time to figure out what is and is not responsive. You can't just do a search because the title doesn't align with the request language use. Does that make sense? So it is looking for that. And I think we do try to be reasonable and work with the rest of it. And I will give credit where credit's due to some of our questions are very reasonable and just say, you know, at the end of the day, this is what I want. Great. Happy to go find that. And I think that it happened in this two week period. Cool. We'll go do that. And and that's not to say that anyone appearing on the log is is. Is not accommodating. I'm not trying to be disparate in any way or disparage anyone in any way. But I I do think that. The extent people are willing to narrow requests to what they're really looking for, that's helpful because it reduces the number of. Non-adaptive records that are identified because we had to review them all. If they come up in the electronic search, we have to review them. To make sure that whether or not they are not responsive. So the more particular you are when you're looking for. It changes the size of the haystack that we're looking for needle then.
Sam, did you have a question?
Yes, I I just want to go back to what Magnitai was saying. I think what I hear Mag- Magitai say is sometimes there are areas that and. That it seems like people are really particularly interested in, right? If they're particularly interested in training and I'm thinking they might think that we're getting training or staff is getting training. In critical race theory or D I work, inclusionary things. And so so I think those particular training, those might have have been more interest. And so personally, I would love to see a lot more transparency and a lot of posting everywhere. Of like, this is all the amazing training that we're doing. And so what I hear what Magitai is saying is like, if we did all of that, maybe people wouldn't have to ask. You know, hey, what kind of training are they going to? Because I would be really proud. To highlight all the trainings that our teachers and staff are going through. And if there's a place that we can really amplify and put it out there so that people would know. Another area it seems like people are really interested is in special education. And so then kind of looking at this, you know, thinking about what we can we do. Is of course there's this public record, but I'm always trying to understand the psychology of what are people really asking? And what are we really not showing them? And then so then if we can again, be transparent, it's not like we have, it's not like we haven't intentionally hid it. Or try to hide it from them, but maybe we just kind of assume people knew or it's just part of our everyday work that we don't think about it. But if we kind of really rethink about how can we just make a lot of these information available? Maybe people won't ask for it. I don't know if that's the answer, but it doesn't hurt to try to start to overshare. All the wonderful things that we're doing and see if. You know, people would have enough motivation. And so that's kind of where I'm hearing Magitai and if that's what Magitai you're saying, then I agree. That there's a way, how can we amplify what we're doing to the community?
I I think it's hard. I I hear what you're saying. We have teachers here, obviously, they attend lots of trains. And not all of them are sponsored by the district, but when these come in, if a teacher is using it to support their credential. And then they're putting it in, then we have to still go out and ask. And so it isn't necessarily just the the trainings that we're doing. It's all of the other ones. And if someone came from another district. But the records request is from the same amount of time and they want it from two thousand seventeen to whatever. Now we have to look at, you know, and frankly, it makes the teachers feel. It it's usually about specific teachers. And then that specific teacher feels like, why is someone wanting to know about me and my trainings? And that calls into me, am I doing my job? You know, what do you think about that? So it it's it for our main trainings, our big ones, absolutely. You know, we have that, we have records, but you know, it it gets a little bit more nuanced than that. But we will continue to work with our community. This is not an exercise in. Putting up walls, but rather the reality of how much it costs and how much time it takes. And when we're working on this, we're not working on workforce diversification. When we're working on this, we're not planning the best professional development possible. We're running and tracking down other things, so. The next one is online ALE learning and so Director Prescott. Update on our FTE enrollment ratios certified certified stat.
Sure. I will try to make this brief. Long story short, if you look at our our data, you will see that we had an uptick at the end of the first year with the COVID hit. We had an uptick in the spring specifically as schools closed. We had a a big jump then for the twenty 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 one school year. Where we had a hundred and seventy four average headcount of students participating. If you recall, we also were approved to be a fully online. So previously we had been able, students had been able to take up to fifty percent of their courses online through us. And we sought approval and we have it at least through twenty twenty four. Where a student enrolled through Marsha Island School District could be enrolled fully online. And so we had a number of additional students who opted for that based on the learning structure during COVID. And they they either weren't finding it successful to join synchronously with their classes. They needed more flexibility based on family or travel. If you recall, we had students who were not even living on the island at the time of COVID. And so that number spiked up in twenty 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 one. And then for last year, we saw a more typical number dropped down to eighty eight. And that's most of our students, we had a hundred and forty five different students who enrolled in a course or more. And in a hundred and one different courses. And so that is in line with more historic longitudinal data. And so we we will continue to support that. We we maximize our teachers. We've got point eight FTE that is dedicated to supporting students who enroll in courses online through us. And. You know, we we continue to see support for them and those those numbers max out. So at some point we might, we might need to increase FTE there, but for now we're holding pretty steady to where we were prior to the pandemic.
Director Prescott, you want to do athletics?
Sure. So the next piece is proportionality data specific to athletics and participation both at the middle school and high school. The middle school during COVID had reduced number of offerings. And both middle school and high school reported that both all sports are back online and were last year. And so proportionality wise, the high school has a near identical proportionality of. Female students enrolled, male students enrolled in their athletic participation. We had not tracked over time. We now have the data, but the N is very small. For students who don't identify as binary gender and are non-binary or mark gender X in Skyward. So we have that data. We will continue to track that kind of behind the scenes. And as our numbers grow and we're able to share that data, it just didn't make sense to put an. N A or N is greater than ten because we can't report that here now. But as the number increases, we will, we have that to show longitudinally. The middle school, a little bit of a disparity, the seven percent differential in both male and female participation. So seven percent in female negative. Oh, sorry. Oh, was it just me here?
Yes, we're still here.
So you'll see a slight slight disproportionality there, male to female participation. At this point, the middle school is not anticipating changing their offerings. But they're definitely keeping an eye on that disproportionality to see if it tracks over time. Do you want me to talk a little bit and and jump to the athletic survey while we're here? Are you?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm skipping over eighteen, which is restraint and isolation. And number nineteen is the athletic interest survey. So if you recall, it was actually due to be presented in spring of twenty twenty one. But with COVID, we opted to delay reporting on that. And so the athletic survey, interest survey was administered last spring at the high school. And there were a hundred and sixty six respondents and. In there. I think the most interesting piece, if you scroll down, Andreaves, is really the bar graph at the end. And that gives us an idea of what is it that if student, what are we not offering that students are interested in that we could pursue? One of the things that strikes me is we actually do have an esports team now. We have an esports program. And yet thirty two respondents indicated that's what they would need in order to be interested. And so part of it is just the communication and the broadcasting of, we do have an opportunity for some students who maybe aren't connected yet. And so that's something that we'll we'll be talking with the high school about, just making sure that it's out there and kids know that esports exist at the high school. Other key ones are skiing. There's a chunk of students there and right now the high school is just not in a place. We have more athletic team than many of our counterparts that are foray schools. And we just don't have the capacity right now to be adding brand new programs. But they're definitely keeping an eye on this. You'll see, you know, snow sports have a couple of high interests. And bowling is up there in crew. Unfortunately, we have students who are able to access a number of renowned crew programs. In nearby areas, we just don't have one on the island at this point.
What is competitive stunt and T U dot dot dot?
Competitive tumbling. So that's an element. It could be out of gymnastics and or cheer.
I was a ski racer in high school. You know, I quit. They made us do both that. If you did downhill, you also had to do cross country. Very good. I could beat it. After my freshman year, I was.
I recruit in college, but it's practical. Trust me, also I did my ski career. Careful what you wish for. I think that's interesting. Bowling, actually, this is the most surprising to me.
One of the fastest growing high school sports.
And hopefully, how we spend our time.
Something that didn't make the list that is surprising. Pickleball is the fastest growing in the country and in the state of Washington.
I'm waiting for one of you guys to start.
He attacked and saw him, and I'm the champion, by the way.
It's similar, indoor, that's easy to pick up.
Director Lurie, you want to go into restraint and isolation?
Yes. Oh, perfect. Moving us along on back to eighteen. So we are in sizes small, so annual incidents during the twenty one to twenty two school year, we had eleven elementary incidents in ninety five secondary. Both with less than ten kids in each of those sections. And so a hundred and six incidents with twelve students total. Only of them, only three were restrained, were escorts. So that just means I get like hip control and just in a. Lock my arm with you and walk you down the hall kind of thing. And two of them were imminent harm, so they were more than an escort. Students were. In imminent serious danger of. And so those required a lot more adult intervention. And then there was only one staff or student injury reported for the whole year. With that. The law has been changing and so we're no longer allowed to restrain unless it is imminent harm. And so most of that's why most of our incidents are are evacuations. So that we can protect students in that that manner. We also did a duplicated count, which we did last year over a four year. Overview so that you can see trends, but know it's duplicated. So as a student, maybe in our first grader, two thousand eighteen nineteen, then they're a second grader, the next year, and a third grader. So they're going to be counted multiple times in elementary. So that we can hide the actual insight because it's so small.
So we'll finish up the questions on that or any other area that you want to go back to.
Any questions from students? Or members?
I actually have a question. Does staff feel like they have the resources and training they need in order to meet the needs of our students?
So we are ramping up training. We did a right response training that was very well received. The week of Thanksgiving, we are planning a follow up to that in January, late January. A lot of it is social most, social emotional and we're seeing more. Social emotional behavior at students are coming in from the pandemic with less experience with other kids, right? And so I think that is an area that we are looking at to see how we can provide more training. There's this limited amount of training days in time, but yes, we we definitely know that's an area we need to work on.
I mean, when I, we have staff here, when I talk to staff, when our movie and I do, when I talk to our two principals today. You know, the the spectrum of need seems to, you know, the the complexity of need and the spectrum. And so I think that's where we have to continue to try to improve our training and and work. Because we got to respond to students who are coming to us with more complex. Needs than we've seen. And so do we have all the training? No. Do we know that that's a deficit? Yes. And we've got to continue to work together. Across the system as we think about finances, you know, all of our resources.
Yeah. So one of the asks with OSPI is they don't fund what's called indirect services. So we might see a need with a student, but you don't change a behavior. In a few hours a day. It's a twenty four seven thing. And so most of the behavior are what we call carrying behaviors. They're carried in from home, school bus, something else that's that then triggered again in this whole day. So then it's how do we work with the families? Do we provide parent training, counseling or get at the daycare before the student comes to us or what that looks like? So there's a lot more involved. Than just our staff training. So we are looking at it as a systemic level. And then we're also working with OSPI to say, hey, you have to understand that you're not funding any of this. And this also could change is going to require a lot more.
Any other questions? And thank you for the update. That was a long one. I was going to vote to find a superintendent in compliance of nineteen hundred O B nine.
I moved that we found a superintendent in compliance with eighteen hundred O E.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, students?
Aye.
And board directors in favor?
Aye.
And any again opposed? So that plus is seven zero. Okay, let's keep moving. Through the finish line. Consent, I'll just get a motion to approve the consent agenda. So. And the second please. Any discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor, students?
Aye.
And directors?
Aye.
Against? Is a plus of seven zero as well. And to superintendent announcements?
Circling back to the beginning of the meeting, with Director Lurie now as the legislative rep, we do have two meetings next. We do have two meetings next week, one with, uh, Representative Sen. Uh, and I believe that's on December. Well, Senator Roman is the sixteenth, so Sen must be the fifteenth, uh, both meetings are at nine thirty AM. So I don't know if, if scheduled right now with Director Lewis and Director Souza, I don't know if you want. I mean, it seems like Director Lurie, you're going to need to join in on there. We can only have two, be my recommendation, but I just wanted to circle back on that time. But remember that all of you will be together on January fifth, now five o'clock with our representatives for a full linkage. This was just a one on one, uh, to work, uh, with those two representatives for, for, uh, centers.
So the intent of those meetings was specific to communication though.
Correct, right? Correct. So I don't, you know, it, it's totally up to you, but I just want to remind you what you.
Would you like to present?
Yes.
Okay, um. Uh, let's have Deborah attend, I will drop out. And, uh, Dan, as the expert in this area will attend.
I think we could consider three people, but if you wanted to get overly.
No, I don't.
I, I understand, but I think there is, in the same way that the whole board can attend the business of. The Waza.
We will make that change there and I don't have any other announcements.
Oh, okay, um, let's see, board announcements, in person reports, pleasure report.
Yeah, so real quickly, um, we sort of touched upon it, but, um, David and I met with, uh, Ryan and all, I guess, last week. Um, and, and Fred and, uh, Matt as well. Um, I, I, I think there was a discussion, there was, there was a difference in perspective. Um, I think one of the things, um, that makes me a parent is just when you look at wage tables and when you look at the bonus structure. What that actually means in dollars and cents. Um, to give an example, if you look at a district that's a one point one two like Tacoma, um. Under OSPI's proposal, there's a six percent hike, they would get the full benefit of that. So the dollar value would be four thousand eight hundred and eighty eight dollars for each certificated employee of Tacoma. Assuming that was passed through on a funding basis. When you see a district because of regionalization such as us. We would be get, you would increase wages by six percent, but then regionalization, you essentially, you know, you then take that back. You go from one point one eight to one point one two. So the net effect is that our increase would just be five hundred and forty two dollars. Uh, per, per certificated employee, not the nearly five thousand that a district in one point one two would get. Now that even puts aside, um, the bonus proposal, which would affect forty five percent of all certificated employees. Um, there hadn't been a discussion, um. Of how OSPI proposes that that would be, um, allocated, assuming that it was given on free and reduced lunch. Um, looking at a district such as Tacoma, that would be an additional three thousand five hundred and ninety dollars for Tacoma. Um, for us, it would be, um, let me do the math, like maybe thirty dollars. Uh, so to get a sense of, of, of the proposal that OSPI is putting forth. There will be certain districts under it that would see significantly, uh, more funds available. Um, these are districts that have lower cost of living, um, that staff does not have to pay a commuting burden. Um, that ours does and, uh, our message, uh, to Chris and will continue to be, uh, not to Chris, but just. The legislators is explaining that in order to attract and retain our, in our district. Um, we need to pay a wage that is appropriate for the cost of living. Um, that was the deal that was struck post-McLeary. Um, there's nothing to suggest that areas such as, you know, the huge sound region become comparatively any less expensive. I think we all know it's going to become more expensive. Um, and it will make it difficult for staff that does not already own the house. Um, to continue to remain in an area when other districts can pay the same or in many cases more. Um, if one looks at average median salary in areas such as Kennewick, Yakima, Spokane. Uh, they would able, be able to pay their staff more than we would. And, uh, I, I just think that rationality and reason, uh, needs to be part of the discussion. And I am optimistic that legislators, uh, will be responsive to that. Uh, but I think that it needs to be communicated that it needs to be based on, uh, reality, um, rather than sort of empty rhetoric.
And it's, uh, important to note even pre-McLeary. With the levy, the way the levies were structured, we had a much larger levy. Uh, it was based on home values, so we could increase it. So there was a, uh, a hidden implicit, uh, inflation index for cost of living in the area. And even when the state did not give teachers raises, we gave teachers raises out of our levy to make, um. Make up for cost of living, so cost of living has been a long tradition for. Uh, school districts in King County, the state may not have funded it, but the local communities did. The goal of McLeary was to replace what the local community did, reduced our levy provided by the state. And the goal was to hold us homeless. They are now reliving on that, uh, that deal again, so it's, uh, it's pretty distressing. Okay? Uh, anything else to let us know, I think this is the most.
I actually wanted to bring something up, um, I, it hadn't been on my radar that, that I was likely that, that rep for this year. But, um, but since it has been, um, I'm wondering, I've heard great things about the NSBA Advocacy Institute. Uh, that meeting that is every, it's a three day conference in DC every year. And, um, you know, similar to our day on the hill, it's, it, it ends with meeting with, uh. Work of Education, US Department of Education and, and our federal legislators. Um, you know, especially with our work around, um, special education funding this year. Um, I would love to go, um, as a representative of the district, um. To do that, um, obviously it doesn't come without cost. Um, I just think it's something as we build relationships with our local legislators, you know, building those relationships with our, with our federal as well. Um, I realize that I'm just throwing this out there, um. And I all, you know, I would say we, you know, I asked to put it on the agenda for the next meeting, but then that's already January. Um, so that makes that a little difficult since it's the last weekend in January. So I'm just kind of throwing it out there, I, I know it's not a ton of notice, the registration for the three day conference. Officers, um, that the Marriott Marquis in DC, so kind of those costs associated with it.
Something that needs the board vote or?
I, I don't, I'm.
Require more vote, I, where you're looking, or if I'm reading you is just, eh, is that something the board supports? And I think you're looking to your colleagues.
Right. It is just travel money and funding money, I don't take that lightly, I'm not visiting right now that I can do that myself, um. Nor do I.
No, 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 if you're speaking on the, boy, that would not be expected, you'd spend your money on it. Um, I appreciate as well that we should be looking at the federal level. There has been a lockdown with the Board of Education that has, uh, improved education for our kids and our, our district. Uh, well, whether it be food or special ed or, uh, uh, Title One or Title X, um, or Title Nine too. Um, so yeah, there, there's, there's, there's interestedness, um.
Yeah, I know people want time to kind of look at it and think about it and I just, yeah, I mean.
When you, I, I, I assume you have to register, I assume you have to book flights and.
Right, and it's, um, I mean, we already missed the early bird deadline, which was half day for a hundred dollars. What, what's it called? NSBA, so the National School Board Association, um, Advocacy Institute.
Well, this should lead to more.
So yeah, like it's like, it's a good one, it's a two day conference plus the day on the hill. Um, so I don't, people.
Do I, do I hear any concerns for any board members around this being useful? Oh, not whether it considers it is not useful.
No, it sounds good.
So, um, with, with that, I think you better.
Izakua usually said, well, they have to, because Barney's on the national boards, but, um, a few districts around you send them, I think, North Shore. Washington, like Washington, so you'll have other colleagues.
Right, and I just think, I mean, I also, because of that, and then it's obviously where people come to stay here, I mean, the refs and senators, um, that, uh. You know, it's another opportunity to. As we've been discussing with, um, the regionalization and other local issues to perhaps build some partnerships.
Yeah, it sounds like there's connections through the NSBA to a bunch of other really useful groups and resources and like.
So perhaps in the next meeting you can give us an overview and if there's anything you want from us or from us. Against other topics that may be of interest. Uh, then we will talk to Fred, uh, uh, about that as well and maybe contribute. Uh, for the next one, but, uh, uh, the assumption is you're going and this will come on the board budget. If it is, yeah. Right, uh, with that, let's. Uh, so, anything else?
No, not for lunch now.
Uh, let's move on to board member announcements, increasing reports, Tam, would you like to pick us up?
I don't really have anything, but I would like to also, uh, do a thank you to Maggie Tai. For her term in serving as our board president. Uh, there was a lot of changes, but I think with Maggie Tai really care and warmth, uh, she kept, uh, a staple. And I know there's a lot of work of trying to run interference, uh, between board members and administration. And I think she did that fabulously. And what I really appreciate during this time is, uh, even through all the craziness, she just has this really eternal optimism. That, uh, made everything, uh, okay and all better. And that has made me remember that as long as we're together working to this, we're, we're going to be okay. So thank you Maggie Tai for bringing those quality, qualities to your leadership and we really benefited from it.
Thank you so much. I have a board announcement, just attended the language pack. Oh, and was the, yeah, okay. Um, yes, well, Deborah and I, together with our chief representatives and Dr. Riddle and so on, the districts, um, attended the, uh. The Waza annual conference in Spokane and there were phenomenal keynote speakers that, that. Deborah and I will probably be talking about as the, as the year goes on, um, but really fantastic, you know, because we also. I don't know about you, but I, I did all my required, um, E I training that, that the, what we can say legislature passed a couple of years ago. And this is finally kicking in this year, so I did those trainings, um, so, yeah, so we did all those trainings.
Um, I, yeah, did, I won the, um, the state conference, it was, I, I, I always really liked them and I think, um. It seems shorter this year, it seems smaller and shorter.
Smaller.
Yeah, well, it was, I know it was both, but I think this Spokane ones are technically smaller, but, um, but anyways, it was great and, um. And I love our students, well, I should sort of have the opportunity to go to the gutsy after there, um, and then, uh. Yeah, that's it, but.
It's also like a really great reminder of how diverse school districts in Washington State are, right? Talking to people who are from districts that have like less than fifty students, you know, but still have five board members. Um, you know, there's super rural places that are, you know, uniquely situated, say like along the, the border with Idaho. And so, you know, the, they, they don't have much of the facilities at their local high school. But the high school that's literally like a stone's throw across the river has amazing facilities, but they can't make use of those facilities. Because it's like interstate instead of, you know, within intrastates. So, yeah, just a really unique situation for this place.
And I would love just as a result of that, um, love to see us, uh, consider putting a linkage session with our student advisory.
Yeah. You keep us honest.
Nothing is new.
And, uh, nothing additional, um, so with that, I'll just say a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Good, uh, all in favor, students?
Aye.
And directors?
Aye.
And that's plus a seven zero, I was looking at it, we all agree that.